I call this meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. A little clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Councilmember Schultz.
I expect both councilmembers, Smith and Schultz, will be joining us any minute. The first thing we're going to do this evening is have a presentation on the Grant Review Committee's recommendations on community grants, and I believe Ms. Danes is going to introduce this presentation.
Good evening. Tonight is the beginning of a new process that the City Council approved in July of this year establishing specific guidelines for its grants program and a more formal review process than has been used in the past. Just to remind those of you who were involved in that discussion and to give you an update for those of you that weren't. In prior years, the city had two essential grant categories, small grants and large grants. Small grants were any request for funding that was below $2,500, and anything above that was considered a large grant. The smaller grants were reviewed by Grants Review Committee and presented to the City Council for consideration. The larger grants were reviewed specifically by the City Council without any Review Committee recommendations. So this year, we have three grant categories. We have cultural and STEM grants, we have capital grants, and program and operating support grants. They have all been reviewed by the Grants Review Committee that was appointed by the Council earlier this year, and they are going to be making their recommendations to you this evening. Following their presentation, the Council will have an opportunity to discuss them, and then I believe next week or the following week, the Council will make formal action on the recommendations of the committee. The other thing that I wanted to point out was that in some of the categories, not all of the grant funds were awarded. So for example, in the cultural and STEM grants, I believe there was about $3,000 that was not allocated to projects or applications. Rather than going out for another round for a very small amount of money, the balance of unawarded or unrecommended, the balance of grant funds that weren't recommended for distribution were put into the program and operating support category because we had significantly larger requests for funding. So if you see the numbers being moved around a little bit, that's why. This will facilitate the grants award process and also eliminate the need to go out for another round of funding requests.
And if you can clarify one thing, you said that we have the three categories, but you, I think what you also need to add is that those are for the large grants, the small grants are a separate process.
These are for grants that exceed $2,500. The smaller grants, those that are less than $2,500, will go through the Mini Grant Review process. We've solicited proposals for the administration of that fund, and that information will be forwarded to the Council next week.
So we still have the two separate?
You still have the two different categories, they have different names, and you have clear expectations in terms of what's needed to apply for funding, how the funds can be used, and the reporting criteria for each of those categories.
Okay. Thanks for that introduction.
And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the committee.
Welcome.
How are you?
Good.
Um...
If you want to introduce yourselves?
My name is Akina Allen.
I'm Gary Cardillo. We serve on the Grants Committee, co-chairs.
We co-chairs.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thanks for having us tonight.
We were, we're awarding, would you like to hear what we awarded, or what explanations were you looking for?
If you, if you want to go through your recommendations and any elucidation of reasons why you chose particular things or didn't choose particular things would be very helpful.
Well, what we did was, we gave OTBA the $8,000 for what they requested. I believe one was for signs, and we felt it was significant because of the fact that it allowed people to look at Tacoma Park as not just a sleepy town, but it gave some character and some direction as to where Tacoma winds between DC and Maryland. And also, DC also gave this organization money for these particular items as well. And that was for the capital grant recommendation section. The Tacoma Presbyterian Church, we gave the $10,000 for the expansion of the, I believe it was their kitchen, that they were looking for. So we granted that because we felt it was a worthy cause, because they're helping low to moderate income individuals with starting maybe catering or food service companies. So we thought that was a very worthy cause because it's including everybody. For the cultural STEM grants, the African immigrant...
Is there anything you want to say about the ones that you didn't award?
The ones that we didn't grant were because either we felt like they didn't meet the need or the criteria of the grant, so that we went with that right there. For the cultural STEM grants, the African immigrant and refugee, we felt that was very, very, very important because as immigrants come over, it's very hard to navigate, and we felt that what this program provided was a really good backdrop for learning and education for the next generation that came over. And it also probably gave a more equilibrium and maybe closing the achievement gap in the minority section. The docs in progress, we thought that was a really good piece because it gave art a chance to display maybe who Tacoma was, and just gave more of a really good, and they've done really good projects in the past from what we see.
Any comments on the ballet?
We actually gave them the money for that right there because it was opening, and it was introducing culture in ballet to maybe in a particular section that may not have looked at ballet, and we think it's important that people and children are exposed to art.
Oh, that's the movieous ballet?
Yeah, the movieous ballet.
What about the Akmodova Ballet?
I'm sorry.
I believe there was, there was a little ambiguity about what was needed in reference to that.
They were unclear about, well, our audience, we may have a school or a senior group come in, and they were very unclear. We felt that while the project looked like a good project, they didn't really seem to have a plan as to how they were going to execute it, who the audience was going to be. Was it going to be students? Was it going to be seniors? What would the city residents, which city residents would benefit from it, and how exactly they would benefit? How many of them would? Who would? And we felt that given the expenses that they were looking to cover, it was more, there were expenses that really should have been covered under, like, instead of a cultural grant, more of kind of an operating or a, or a capital grant. There were things that a ballet company should own or already have, they should own already, like a Marley floor, which pretty much every ballet company is looking for, should have. It's a floor you roll out, ballet dancers really need a Marley floor to dance on, or they could really screw up their legs. So there were things like that. Great project, it just, it just didn't really fit into what we were tasked with.
Okay.
And with that, that's what was the difference between the two different ballet companies because we looked at what was being offered, and this was more closed, and we were looking for things that were open. Tacoma Park is a very diverse and open area, and we want things to be reflected if we're funding.
Okay, thanks.
OTBA, yes, we gave them their grant again because again, they reflect such a great diversity in Tacoma Park. They have different little coffee shops and different things that people like, and I think it's good to keep them going.
I mean, we talked about, at first when I saw that first grant proposal from OTBA, I was like, we're giving money for signs? I was, I was against it at first, but when we looked further into the grant proposal and for what it was, it really, it was, it was marking and designating this critical mass that we really have come to in Tacoma Park where we now are a place where you can live, shop, work, and basically, shopping and eating are kind of one of the focuses of this, where it designates the area of where this kind of greater Tacoma, Tacoma DC, Tacoma Park, where it is, where all the attractions are, and it really gets people thinking of Tacoma Park as maybe somewhere, rather than just a bedroom community, more of a place that is a destination, not to sing. I guess I am...
It's a lot of nostalgia about Tacoma Park that this would highlight, and it would also make for really good, maybe promotion, maybe attracting, maybe filming here in Tacoma because we have such a diverse area that when you get off the metro, you need to know you're in Tacoma Park. And we want people to know that. And with DC being able to say, yes, we would like this, and with the development in Tacoma Park, we really want to make sure that we stand out, and we felt this was a way to do it.
Things like Republic being a destination restaurant where people would come to Republic, well, that there are other places they could go as well.
Like the Middle Eastern restaurant that's there, the gelato place that was highlighted in one of the periodicals that I read, they talked about the gelato being in Tacoma Park or the food trucks or the, just the uniqueness of Tacoma Park being, and we just wanted to make sure it was represented.
Unique and the extent. I mean, there's a lot more here than five years ago. It's a lot more here, and that's one thing that these, at least for the first grant, the signage was, was really important to get people to focus on that, especially people from the outside, but also people here.
So we...
Build the tax, sorry, I build the tax base too.
Yeah.
I'm a, yeah, finance guy, that's my, yeah.
The Tacoma Ensemble, we like this. We like the instruments. We really like this.
Homegrown organization, great success, past successes, and their, their events have been very well attended.
And it's very inclusive. We wanted to find out what was inclusive of everybody here in Tacoma Park, and that's why we picked this. The Ensemble can introduce music because we looked at the fact that, one, music and art is being cut from our budgets in schools. Somebody has to preserve the art in extent for our children and for everybody else. So we felt that this grant was given to them.
Tacoma Ensemble is really at the crux of, they're, they're growing from kind of a miniscule organization to like that next step. They're basically at that next step of organizational capacity where they're really starting to firm up as an organization and have real staying power and not just a history of past, past projects that have done really well, but also a staying power. They have stability, and that's something we wanted to definitely support.
The next one was program and operational grant support. We granted real food for kids a grant and what they asked for, and this is because, one, nutrition in schools is very important for everybody, but it reminded me of a young lady who is now, has started a nonprofit out of her dorm room at AU because of the lack of distribution of healthy food in the area. And so when we looked at this grant, we said, you know, this is, yes, going to be done and essentially partly by intern, but college is where we learn and example of growth. And we felt like because this will be done by a college student with oversight with other professionals, we felt like this was important because we could spark a passion and change the course of a world.
We saw a lot of bang for our buck from that one with having, funding that intern at that level. We saw a lot of...
And it wasn't just one school. It was multiple schools that they were looking at food choices and things of that nature.
Also past, history of great, of great programs that they've been able to execute well for the organization.
We looked at Crossroads Food Network. This one right here is, again, it addresses a need in our area for food. We have a lot of people who, and children who go hungry, and keeping places available for food for families that go through hard times is really important. So that's why we looked at the, and the application was really good too. The application was good, they have good KPIs, we know what's going on, the program is not ambiguous. So that's the way we looked at this particular...
They execute well.
Very well.
Can you say a little bit more about that one in terms of what the intention is?
The intention of Crossroads, Crossroads is an organization or?
Or this particular request? Or maybe Ms. Danes can provide a little additional...
Yeah. Can you jog my memory on that one?
The Crossroads Community Food Network has asked for overall general program operating support, so that would be for all of their nutrition programs, their farmer's market, they have a training program for urban farmers, so it's for across the board to support their activities as opposed to a specific program or project.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks.
And with that, thank you. And then with that right there, because of the fact that, you know, when you're looking at growing fresh food and fresh vegetables, it's becoming a phenomenon, you know, throughout the city and throughout the area, especially as the area is changing. We looked at EduCare. EduCare is really, 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 I've seen EduCare in my neighborhood delivering food to people who needed mental health and other people, and we felt like this organization is really hitting the heart of a need that's in our community. So that's why we, we decided we were going to go with them, and it's that his application was really good too, and he was executable with a lot of stuff, so that's why we went with him. Tacoma Plays, I think Tacoma Plays is probably one of the unique things I've ever seen where you put people together, you put children together, and you play games. As a parent, looking at what games and play does for a child, I think that it's something that needs to spread as well because when you're looking at what children learn with games, what they learn with play, cognitive abilities come into play, I think this is an ample opportunity to start something, especially as it gets colder and you need things for children to do so they don't get cabin fever, but it's just something that sparks something, maybe a family game night. So we thought this was really good for networking, meeting people in your area.
Really spoke to us as a community too.
Yeah.
They have a great history of executing great programs, really well attended, and just really spoke to, to who we are as a, as a city. We were, yeah.
Yeah, we were really...
We got that one on the cheap, we felt, we got, we're getting that one on the cheap too, so.
We really liked that one.
Anything else you want to say about any of the ones that you didn't recommend?
We're happy to answer questions if you have specific questions about, again, why a specific one we would recommend for a grant or we wouldn't.
If you can just talk a little bit about, kind of, as I was looking at the last one that you're talking about with Tacoma Plays and then the one two above it, Let's Play America, if there was a link there or the, or the more local focus or anything about that one?
We're already on, we're already on to our next cycle, so I don't have my notes with me just coming from, Tacoma Plays, I remember we were, we were really enamored with for a number of reasons, but Let's Play America?
It was some ambiguity with the, with the application. I believe that was one of the things that we looked at, there was something missing within what was being executed and the inclusion.
Sarah, do you have notes, our notes from that? Do you have our, do you have our notes from that? I'm sorry, I didn't bring my notes with me. I apologize. Do you have our notes from Let's Play America? If you jog my memory on that one, I can...
Both, both of them are the result of our offshoots of Pat Rumbaugh's efforts to introduce play into our lives. The Tacoma, Let's Play America is a new startup organization is focusing primarily on the development of a publication that would be distributed nationally. The difference between the two is that one has a more direct impact, whereas the other is more of a speculative, if you will, in terms of preparing this publication, publishing it, distributing it. Eventually, they will all come together, but at this point in time, there are two separate efforts and two separate requests.
Okay.
We were looking at what was being touched. At the end of the day, what was actually touching the community with this one, and that was the deciding factor of, are we going to fund something that's going to possibly help right then and there, or are we looking at something that could take so many time periods to develop? So that's really why our logic was with that.
Okay. And I just have two other quick questions on the, on what's on the sheet that we've got here. One of them, I believe Ms. Danes can clarify, that the 1,500 that's listed on the grant request for the OTBA under the cultural and STEM area should be 15,000?
You mentioned that when we spoke earlier today, but I was looking at my copy and I couldn't find it. So the request for $15,000 from OTBA and the recommendation for $15,000 is the correct number.
Okay.
1,500 wouldn't fall within our purview for 2,500.
Well, and that's, and that's why it seemed like it must have just been a typo.
On my earliest version that I distributed to the review committee, it did say 1,500 and was a typo.
Because that's what we got.
Ms. Barclays, here.
Okay, so it's different in the packet that's in the door here, but anyway, it's supposed to be 1,500, or 15,000, excuse me.
That's what I thought. And, and you can answer the other question, I think probably just as well as the, as the committee in terms of the, the part that, kind of, how the process worked out in terms of input to the committee on what the council actions were last year on grant proposals and changes, just wondering how that, how that information either was given to the committee or not given to the committee because the, the shared kitchen, I believe the request last year was for 10, but the council did 30,000, and then it's 10 again this year. Was the committee aware of that, kind of that bump up in that?
Didn't make us know what was requested last year or what was, what was granted last year? Yeah, we knew.
Okay, so you had that information?
Yes.
One of the important things to keep in mind is that under the new grant guidelines, an organization is restricted from requesting funding for more than three years for the same project. The effort there is to encourage sustainability over time so that they increase their ability to fund themselves. When we spoke with the Grants Review Committee, we indicated to them that that was to be proactively applied as opposed to retroactively applied. So if there are, there are a couple of repeat grantees, if you will, on this list of recommendations. The fact that they received funding in the past was not a consideration for this group. It will be a consideration in future years.
Okay.
So this is the first year then of any sites?
Correct.
Councilmembers have any questions for the committee? Councilmember Mayo and Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you for your presentation. I guess I was curious whether you all felt that this process is working, whether the guidelines to you were, as a committee, were clear enough. So that's really just a general comment on process and, you know, how things are working. I'm interested in the, just understanding more about the public art installation project that wasn't funded, but I can talk to Ms. Danes afterwards or if you don't remember the details of that project.
Public art, that was Urkelo?
Urceallo.
Urceallo, I'm sorry. Yes, we thought, well, there were a couple of things with that grant proposal. There was the fact that, and Sarah, please correct me, correct us if I'm wrong here. The application was not considered, I think, because it was, well, we considered it, but we rejected it for a couple of reasons, one being it was, he applied as an individual, so that was, that would take him out of the running right at the outset. So we did this...
That's fine, you can stop there.
Okay. Sorry about the pronunciation.
And then just general process, you know, is it, did it work out?
It is pretty straightforward.
Yes.
We had a lot, I know we, we met at one point, we met twice.
We met twice.
Because there was a lot to do, it was kind of the first, it was the initial meeting for us, so there was a lot to do, took over guidelines and basically the formation of the committee and everything else.
Everything else, so we really wanted to make sure that we were efficient.
Yeah.
That we got back to everybody in a timely fashion, and we also gave time for people to submit grants and ask questions and things of that nature, or if something came in and maybe we have to look at it again, then we also gave that cushion of time as well. So we're trying to be as efficient as possible.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, and thank you for all your work on this. I have three questions. One is, if you could talk to us a little bit more about your thinking and the criteria used for the program and operational support grants, and then also some of the organizations that did not receive grants under there, if you could just talk a little bit, I think it was Cheer and Tacoma Ensemble, you had talked about how awesome they are and how terrific they are, and provided a cultural STEM grant but not an operational grant, and then just the amounts. There were some things that like Crossroads asked for a certain amount, you give another amount. Any insights there?
Well, just in general process, you look at, you look at a couple of things. You look at, okay, does the application fulfill what we're asking it to do? For instance, if somebody applies as an individual, they would be discounted out of hand. Does the organization have a history of, of good programs? That's one thing we consider. Do we feel like the organization's able to carry out the project as laid out in the application? So if we feel like, well, for instance, the one ballet company, they, they just didn't outline what they were going to do clearly enough to us, who was going to benefit from it, how many people were going to benefit from it, and it just didn't, it looked like they were looking for program support when they really, what they needed was kind of more...
Capital.
Capital or, yeah, general operating. So, you know, and we would come back, you know, we'd come back with recommendations to them, to people who we didn't fund and say, look, you know, we liked your application, but this, these are some things we had wrong with it, we saw that we're really not right with it, you know, please apply again.
With these suggestions.
Yeah, with these suggestions. Specifically, you had mentioned the other, your other points?
They were just particularly under the program and operational support grant, if you could touch on, I think they were just, you talked about Let's Play America, but the Tacoma Ensemble and I think it's Cheer did not receive grants?
And Enterprise Development.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Ms. Stevens, can you say that again?
Say it again?
The Enterprise Development.
Oh, right.
The third one.
The third one, yeah.
With regards to the, to Tacoma Ensemble, they are a good, good organization, they're definitely at that critical juncture, but their operating, the general operating application just didn't, it wasn't, the application itself wasn't really good enough, it didn't rise to the level of like us funding it at that great organization, but it's, the application didn't fit what we were asking for, so.
So we're looking at pretty specific things in reference to, like, in reference to operational, you know, the tangible outlook and just how it was done. It could be going very well, but from what we read and what we looked at, it didn't look like the ability to execute, and that's what we're looking for, the ability to execute all your tangible results.
I mean, I, I expect them to come back to us for general operating in the future. I mean, where they are and where they're going, I expect. The other ones?
The other ones, okay, we didn't do that, Enterprise Development.
There was a...
We have so many notes in it.
Yeah, we have. Some notes, but I cannot think. Sarah, can you, Enterprise, we talked about, there was, there was an issue with, if I remember correctly, we talked about Enterprise and there, a lot of it was kind of hopeful thinking in the future, but not a lot of history of carrying out quality programs in the past or even in the present.
The tangible result factor is, wasn't exactly what we could see on the application in reference to maybe looking at who you're partnering with in an MOU specifically. So those are the things that I looked at to see, you know, what are you doing with organizations? What results, at the end of the day, what results are you producing with this was a very main concern.
I did, there were some ideas there, but not fleshed out enough for us.
And Cheer was the other one.
Oh.
First one in that category.
The Capacity Building?
I apologize, we, I don't, I should have gotten our notes for this, and I did not.
I think it was something, I remember it was, it was something with the application. It was something that filled in with the KPI section. There was a section where the grantee were supposed to fill out a progressive of what the issue was and how they were intending on doing it, and they left every, a lot of stuff out. There was a lot that was left out, so left it to be ambiguous. So we were trying to search the grant language to see, you know, if they put it in someplace else, and we didn't see it. And there was a chart that was laid out, and I, we didn't see it. But we came back to it and looked at it again, and we still didn't see it. So we couldn't really grant him on something that we can't see.
That's it?
Yeah, I'm good.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank both of you and the rest of the committee for all the work you put in on this. I know that this type of work can be enjoyable on one hand, but it can also be challenging on the other. I just had a couple of questions. One is, you talked about the OTBA grant, and even though you were under the cultural and STEM at the time, you talked mostly about the banners and flags and signage. I just wondered if you could address the, the festival fund?
For the street festival, yeah. They do, the history of their being able to carry out the project has been wonderful. We have faith in their ability to, to do... We have faith in their ability to, to do that. I'm trying to think, how much did we?
We gave OTBA.
For the, the street festivals?
15,000 total.
I'm sorry, say again?
It was 15,000 total.
The street festival is one of, I think, the premier events in Tacoma Park, having just come off the heels of the Folk Festival yesterday. I think the street festival is a very large festival, brings a lot of people to the city as well as celebrates the city itself. A lot of residents attend the festival, it gets a lot of publicity. We just felt like it, it really is a program that is worthy of funding at this point.
And with the changes in Tacoma Park, we felt like the signs in this festival coincide with each other and also gives highlight to the businesses that they serve.
Thank you. Again, back on the Cheer application, I know that they've made great progress in the, over the past few years and had some support last year from the city, and in fact, were able to leverage that support into additional grants from outside of the city. And I know that for this type of a organization, getting a degree of local support is important when applying for other grants. And, and I guess that's not a question, it's a statement. So I would encourage my colleagues to think about maybe how we might be able to shift a little bit of money around into this particular application.
And we'll get to that in the work session.
Okay. And then lastly, I wanted to talk about the EduCare Support Services. First, I will again disclose the fact that my wife is a volunteer director of the Tacoma Park Outlet for Manah Food Centers of Rockville, which does similar food distribution to the very needy in our community, more vulnerable in our community. And my concern with this is, I think EduCare has done great work in, in not only food distribution, but in some other areas. But I see a great duplicity of clients, I would say a significant percentage of the EduCare clients are also the ones that have been Manah clients for years and continue to be Manah clients. And I, I guess I wonder, and maybe this is for our future discussion, if we can't somewhere, in some way, suggest that the money should be used for new clients rather than providing two food packages to, to certain clients and letting other people in the, in the city go hungry.
I know we've entertained proposals in the past that there has been a significant amount of overlap for other programs in terms of people served, and if there, if there is a question where we feel like it rises to the level of too much overlap, we would award one and not the other, and generally, and then in the, we would also then suggest to both of them, please maybe work together and work in concert with each other to, to make sure you, there's not too much overlap, because it would then, the person who's filling out this application and not getting the grant for the organization is basically wasting their time if there's too much overlap, so.
We discussed that as well when we're looking at everything, because we realized that, one, organizations like this have a great impact on the community.
Right.
We also understand your duplicity concern as it pertains to, if I'm funding here in the same package of people here was the definitive thing. And I think we may need to just sit down with both the organizations and decide, okay, if this is what you're doing, this is what we're going to do so that there is no similarities.
Right, I attempted to do that this year, it didn't, it didn't change. I think EduCare felt that they, you know, it was going to be easier for them to meet their goals, even with the duplicity, and, and so that's why I was suggesting that maybe the council wants to suggest it a little stronger, and, and it's for both organizations.
We would only consider overlap in terms of service if we have in front of us the data to support that though. So unless we know-
Right.
-that Manah and EduCare are supporting the same population, then, you know, we can only see what's in front of us, basically, so we can only-
Okay, I thank you.
The clerk of the manager house? Question or comment? Your light's on.
It was Jared.
No, it's not Jared's light. That's Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I apologize for being late this evening. There are a couple of grantees that I would like to talk about. IRF, for one, the African Immigrant and Refugee Foundation. Can you guys give some more information on what programming they're going to provide and what apartment buildings are they going to provide it, or is it going to be at the community center?
It's going to be in there, in the, wherever it's housed at. And what they're going to be providing is homework help for these particular individuals. And as we know, homework is one of the biggest steps with education. So they're going to be providing particular help to this particular population in their common areas. We do know that there is some construction or somewhat going on in their building, but what we're going to do is they're housing it in a common area where there isn't any. So we wanted, and we also made sure that before we gave them this grant to make sure that we weren't trying to possibly fund a facility to execute this, so they can execute.
Bring that up in the meeting.
Yeah, it was a discussion in the meeting to see where they are.
Sarah actually, I think, brought up, oh, there is construction, but the construction, I think, is going to be taking place in a place separate from-
They're in the units, not so much in a common area.
Okay, is it in an apartment building in the city?
Yes, yes. It's on Maple Avenue.
Okay, all right, great. The other potential grantee, Cheer, who I've worked with closely in a number of endeavors in the city, I would hope that we could find a way in the future and maybe in this council to give some money to the organization. Cheer does wonderful work. They are working with a lot of communities that have a lot of demands within their social services, whether they're accessing healthcare. I think they're doing a lot of, a lot of great work. And on that same note, I would like to say EduCare. I'm happy to see that they're on the list. One thing that, that I think is a potential issue is that I don't know if EduCare is actually capturing the type of demand that is out there. If you read that recent Washington Post article about East County, there was an infographic that came with it, and if you looked at Tacoma Park, there was more need in our area than there was in the East County. So I would hope that organizations like EduCare continue to get support. And my colleague's statement about EduCare in Manah, I had a meeting with EduCare also. And EduCare's position has been that they received a grant from the city, so that meant, they thought that that meant that they should be able to provide a satisfied need to anybody that requested. So I, I don't know if we should, as a council, step into this, or we should just let EduCare continue with the mandate that we have given them.
When we make a grant, when we make a grant to somebody, we expect a final report on that grant to, to basically lay out what they did with that money and, again, who they served. And if they didn't, if they didn't do what they laid out in the grant, then as grant, as, as the Grants Committee, we would then take that into consideration for future grants. But reporting is kind of more city and-
Right.
We're not really involved in the reporting level, we just get kind of the notes and reports. But, yeah, I mean, if they're, if they're taking city money and not serving city people to the extent that they said they were, that's something we would definitely want to know as a Grants Committee for future applications.
I, I have not seen any evidence that they have not served city residents to the extent that they said that they would. I haven't seen anything like that.
And let me just say at that, at that point, that if some, if a grantee submits information for what they've done, looking for reimbursement for their expenses from that grant, and it doesn't satisfy the, the conditions of the grant, the city does not reimburse.
I would hope they wouldn't.
No, so.
And, and to be clear, that was not my contention.
No, but I would say-
Okay.
If that were to be the case, that's, that's how it works.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
But what we, what we're going to do, and I guess you guys should know, is that what I'm going to end up doing is, when I looked at some of the grants, I could look at them and see which organizations qualify for certain funding they may not even know they can get. So what I'm going to do is find a way to, to help each one of the grantees, especially the ones who did not get the money that they were looking for, looking at resources that I get access to and things that are going to actually impact and help on many areas that they are. So I have talked to Sarah about putting together something and talking to all of them either one-on-one or either as like a town hall to look and say, "Well, you didn't know about this funding," or like when I, I get inundated with grant information, I just don't know where to put it. So this is a good opportunity for, to give out information on grants that people can utilize in our community, especially with the healthcare, I get a lot of them from United Healthcare, and these are things that can help education, and they're all rolling grants in most cases.
Okay, thanks very much for the presentation and for the additional information. And after we go through the other preliminaries for the council meeting, then we'll have a work session discussion and with the council deciding where we might want to go with these things. And I encourage you to stay and listen to the conversation, but if you can't, you can always review it on the video later on the website.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is any additional agenda items, which you don't have, and agenda scheduling update. I just want to point out one or two things on upcoming agendas now that we're back from our summer recess. Next week, September 15th, we have a public hearing on priority needs and proposed projects for the Community Development Block Grant Program. We have also a presentation, which is an update on Washington Adventist Hospital's petition to relocate. The following Monday, September 22nd, we have work session items, including planning for snow removal and snow emergencies. We want to try and do that well ahead of the snow season so that everybody has clear expectations of what we're going to be doing going into the winter, assuming we get some winter weather. And then the following Monday, September 29th, we have a work session on the Tacoma Junction Development Proposals, which will be presented on Tuesday, September 23rd at seven, seven o'clock, not 7:30 as it says on the rolling agenda, in this room. And that's an opportunity for the council and the public to hear presentations from the developers who will be letting us know all about their potential development project for the Tacoma Junction lot in response to our requests for proposals. So that's just a couple of additional items that are coming up on future agendas. I'm going to skip over for the moment the proclamation on September is prepared this month and do that a little bit later in the agenda, and we'll now go to public comments. And that is an opportunity for anybody who's here who wishes to comment on anything, basically anything, because we don't have any voting items this evening on our agenda, and so it would be anything on our work session or anything not on the agenda. And if you can, please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes.
There's a group, so I think it'd be best if everybody came up at once. Just if you want to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, staff. My name is David Reiser, I live on Maple Avenue, and I'll let her, I'm going to stand aside in a second.
I'm Tom Hanesko, I live next door to the church.
John O'Connor, right opposite from the church.
I'm Kathy Serace, and I live on Tulip, on the 200 block of Tulip.
And I'm Judy Aronson, I live at 312 Tulip, which is right next door to the community center.
In an effort to be brief, I mean, you've all gotten letters, copies of letters, both individual letters and a group letter, but we're here mostly to plead to each and every member of the council to take responsibility for the impact that the proposed commercial kitchen development will have on the immediate neighborhood, the people who are facing and next door and right behind the, the proposed commercial kitchen, to take into consideration the fact that the proposal now is dramatically different from the one that was sold to the council in 2012, that this is not a proposed, a plan that is limited, income limited, as the Grants Committee apparently believed. Eighty-five percent of the use will be collectively for micro enterprise, but only 25% of that is for program participants who are income qualified. Anybody else can do it. And so over half of the many, many hours of kitchen use will be for people who are perfectly capable of buying commercial space if they need to. The original plan emphasized how small it was. One of the advocates stood up here in January of 2012 and said, "1,200 square foot cap is fine with us," because in fact, we were just, they were just talking about the existing kitchen, which was 700 square feet. And so what we're talking about now is not something that the council has approved, and there is now $360,000 of taxpayer money committed to this project. We could have done something two years ago, somewhere else. All of the problems and obstacles are a result of where this is being placed. Anyway, there are people who, who have very immediate impacts from the kitchen you should hear from.
We, John O'Connor, and I'm representing my wife Kelly as well, who teaches at Montgomery Blair High School. We remain totally in support of the initial project as we understood it to be, which was the refurbishment of the kitchen for local small commercial concerns. We are shocked at the way it has grown without our knowledge. We were away for a few weeks in the summer, we came back to find, thanks to our neighbors, who had actually been investigating, because we were not given any information about this at all, that it had doubled in size, and we were looking at a project, a commercial project, which would operate at, the latest figures are something like, certainly seven days a week for many hours. I stand to be corrected on this, but it was something like, last I heard was six thirty, six in the mornings, late 30 at night, in a tiny residential street. It's going to change our, our lives considerably, and we're, a bunch of us are extremely upset about it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Tom Hanesko, I'm on Maple Ave, right next to the church. And I'd like to echo what David Adjon just said. Part of our problem with this is we find out everything about this the day after it happens. We're not told in advance, it's almost as if they want to hide what they're doing because they know it's wrong. They introduce a kitchen refurbishment, and then later on you find out they're adding a second kitchen to a second story with a dormer and a parking lot. I mean, it's, it's like this, this bait and switch. They get a little bit of foot in the door and all of a sudden it's expanded. And I consider myself and my wife especially extremely knowledgeable about city affairs and what goes on in the neighborhood, and she had no idea some of this stuff was going on until after it happened. It's turning into a commercial kitchen, and a very big commercial kitchen. It's not what it started out to be. It started out to be a nice little community thing, small, nice, the sort of thing a church should do. You should help other people. But now, it's turned into a business, and that's not what we signed up for.
Well, I have lived at 312 Tulip for 38 years, and this is startling development for us because we are right next door to the community center. And our concerns are with the fact that there will be a commercial dumpster within feet of, of our house, that we're concerned about the potential for rodents, for, for things that, you know, obviously you watch for, but you're creating circumstances which- but you're creating circumstances which are liable to cause these kinds of things to happen. And, you know, whether it be smells or whether it be, you know, I'm concerned about the kids. There are over 100 kids, little kids, in the daycare center. And there's going to be kitchen stuff going on all the time. And, and it's Tacoma Avenue. It's not New Hampshire Avenue. It's not Georgia Avenue. It's a narrow street where basically two cars can pass each other. And the idea of trucks coming in with produce, people being there from 6:30 in the morning when we already have enormous congestion at delivery time for when the kids come at eight and for pickup time between five and six. And this is just added on to it in an enormous way. And so our concern is that it has grown. Every time I see these signs that say, you know, "Not supersized", that's what I wanna say to the church. Don't supersize this. I'm Kathy Serace, and I've lived on Tulip Avenue for 24 years. And I have always, when I first heard about this a few years ago, I was a big supporter of it because I had understood it to be very small. And generally speaking, I, my family and I, even though we don't go to the church, we're, we're big supporters of the church. We know it does a lot of wonderful things for our community. We love the daycare center. But just in recent times, in learning from the people most directly impacted by this, of all the changes, I think it's time to stop any further funding of it until we can take a closer look and see. I feel very confident that if everyone gets together, this can be worked out. I just think that people have been, it's been given as a fiat, this is the way it's gonna be. And other than Jill, who's a member of the church, the other people involved with this, they're not directly impacted by it. And I think what really made me start thinking about this more and more is that we have a huge, huge changes are afoot in Tacoma Park in our neighborhood. We have the building that's gonna be opening up on Carol Avenue. We have the development by the subway. I just saw alone a huge change when Republic, the restaurant that everyone wanted to come, I can no longer, on my way home from work, stop if I'm driving and just park my car and find a space anymore. And I, I accept that change in general is good, but I think we have to temper that change. And I think that we have to really take a look at what the church is saying, that this is gonna be a low-income, you know, support, feeding the hungry, and, and try to make the kitchen proposal fit that goal and not become something that is completely out of proportion. And I feel that it can be mediated, but we should not go ahead with more taxpayer money until that is done. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Parsons, and I live on Grant Avenue. And I'm also the co-director of Real Food for Kids Montgomery. And I wanted to thank the council and the Grants Committee for the past grants that they've given to our organization and also for the recommendation for the grant in this cycle. The original grant from Tacoma Park that was more than a year ago really moved our organization from a small group of parents around a dinner table to a functioning nonprofit organization. From the publicity for the two events that it supported, to the rapid ramp up of volunteers, to this speeding up of the process of us finding a fiscal sponsor so we could become a 501(c)(3), to the strong base of support that we gathered in Tacoma Park because of those events. It really helped us as an organization. And then the second grant that you gave us and the waiver of the auditorium fees for the screening of lunch hour further increased our support in Tacoma Park. And now we have, of our 3,000 supporters, almost 500 are from this area. So it's, it's a real, a real example of how a small city with progressive values has been able to help develop our organization to benefits and change food in the entire school system and county. Some successes that we've had since this time. We had a trial of healthier vending à la carte at Tacoma Park Middle School all last year. And we got the strawberry milk removed from all schools in Montgomery County, an issue that was of concern to Tacoma Park parents for many years. And we got this, the school system to delay turning on the worst vending machines until 30 minutes after the end of the school day so kids couldn't stock up on candy and soda before they, before they left school. Thirteen percent of high school kids in Montgomery County are overweight and 7% are obese, with rates for black and Hispanic or Latino kids more than double that of white children, putting them at increased risk for heart disease, diabetes, cancer, and a lifetime of health problems. Changes in school food can impact in a concrete manner the daily diets of a large portion of 154,000 children in Montgomery County Public Schools, in particular, the 34% who are on free and reduced meals and eat school food as many as three times a day. So the grant that we're, that was recommended for us is for an intern for school, it's called the School Liaison for Nutrition Improvements. And that intern will work with parents who are the representatives for Real Food for Kids Montgomery in the Tacoma Park schools and the schools that they feed into, and help to get the junky à la carte items that we brought in the last time you saw us here out of the school, school cafeteria lines and vending machines. And to put wellness committees into each of those schools so that parents can help decide on what, what kinds of things they want sold in their cafeterias. They'll work on a parent survey, and they'll bring some expertise in rearranging cafeterias so the kids will make better, healthier choices. And put salad bars into each of those schools, which will give kids a greater chance of selecting fruit and vegetables. And they'll also reach out to the Spanish-speaking populations at those schools. So we just wanted to thank the Grants Committee for recommending and recommending us and ask that you would move forward and grant us that grant. Thank you.
Thanks very much. That was helpful.
Hi, I'm Laura Barclay with the Old Tacoma Business Association. I too would like to thank the Grant Committee for recommending the two grants that we submitted through this grant cycle. And I'd like to urge the City Council to approve these two funding requests. We believe that these grants contribute to the livability of our community and help support our local businesses. The proposed festival fund will enhance the street festival, as they mentioned, but specifically, it will allow us to continue with the Tacoma Park Earth Day event and the Grand Avenue markets again in 2015. Additionally, the proposed lamppost flags that they mentioned will provide us with the tools to create visual cues to help connect the Tacoma Junction and all of the new activity happening there with the rest of Old Tacoma. So we think it's an important piece. So we thank you for the consideration and hope you'll fund our grant. I also, while I have you, wanted to invite everyone to Old Tacoma this weekend. We have sidewalk sale. We have all sorts of outdoor activities to attract visitors with events and music and demonstrations happening all weekend at the gazebo. We have the Tacoma Park Farmers Market Apple Pie Contest on Sunday and the Grant Avenue Market taking place across from the Co-op on Grand Avenue with free pedicab rides to get you back and forth around town. So hope to see you there.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Brenda Platt. On March Avenue, I also co-lead the Young Activist Club. And I just wanna thank you all for taking, putting on the agenda the Young Activist Act of 2014 and in particular to Seth Grimes for your leadership and all the research that went into that and staff for supporting it. As was mentioned in the cover note that was put together, the Montgomery County Council will be introducing a similar bill tomorrow night. Hans Reamer is leading that effort. And it'll, in some ways, it's mirroring what DC just passed this summer, but going beyond DC's bill to require that grocery stores don't sell in bulk styrofoam products. But this bill that you'll be taking up tonight covers a wider range of products. And on behalf of the Young Activist Club, we thank you for presenting a clean bill, and we support this, this version. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Ronald Mitchell. I've been in Tacoma Park since 1968. I have a business, a beauty and barber shop in the Park, Ritchie. My concern is a different concern. I'm concerned about the relationship between the young black males and the police department. And I was concerned about the fact that what happened down in Missouri could happen here. And I just wanna tell you a quick story that I witnessed myself. Several years ago, I was leaving from work on a Saturday evening. And they had this young boy up against the police car. And they were questioning him about something that he may have done. But it was like full policeman. So they convinced him to leave the area. He, he agreed to. So as he was walking away, he was looking back. And they got upset and ran and knocked him on the ground. And I thought that that was kinda bad. But at the time I left, turned around and came back 'cause I, I just couldn't stomach it anymore. So I saw the same police officer. I asked him, I says, "You know, I was really disturbed about what I just witnessed." And he says, "Well, you know, we gotta be, let, let them know who's in charge." I says, "Oh." And I says, "Well, let me ask you this question. What can I do as a person in this city to help bridge the gap between you and these young men out here?" He said, "Go ahead and tell my chief to give me a raise." That was telling me to get out and leave it alone. So I thought I would share that with you 'cause we need to have some type of relationship between the young and the police. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jill Fiesley, and I'm testifying in favor of the grant applications both for the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church and also for the Crossroads Community Food Network. I come bearing, wearing a couple of different hats, as people have heard me say. I am a neighbor who has lived in the 300 block of Tulip Avenue for the past 22 years. It's the same block where the church is and the planned community kitchen. I'm a member of the church, and I currently serve as an elder, which is the governing body of the church. And finally, I'm the director of Meals on Meals of Tacoma Park, which operates a commercial kitchen in a residential area in a church. Our application, which you already have, talks about why the church has been pursuing the community kitchen. I wanna address some of the concerns raised by the handful of neighbors who oppose it. And I am very much in favor, I am a neighbor who is in favor of the kitchen. The opponents of the kitchen say that it doesn't belong in our residential neighborhood. That sort of ignores the elephant in the room, which is the church itself. As you've already heard, it's a very busy church. And it has been an active community hub since 1893, 121 years ago, when it was built by land donated by B.F. Gilbert. But right now, the building not only serves the Presbyterian congregation, but a thriving neighborhood daycare center, several troops of Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, sport teams needing gym space, several 12-step programs, and a host of other neighborhood gatherings. The building is in operation right now in this residential neighborhood from 7:00 in the morning until 10:00 a.m., 10:00 p.m. every weekday and just about as long on the weekends. And as extensively as that building is being used, church leaders also recognize that some of the space was being underutilized and literally a non-contributing resource to the district. And that was the kitchen in the gym building. And so we've been working for the past three years to develop the space to serve the community by allowing local entrepreneurs to use the space to incubate small food-based businesses, hold educational cooking classes, and provide a space to process food to be given to groups that serve hungry people right here in our neighborhood. The church is committed to make this work. We've had numerous community meetings and forums, which neighbors have and have not attended. And we will continue to meet with other stakeholders. I appreciate my neighbors' concerns that we haven't always been able to answer their questions. The plan has evolved over the past three years. And it's also becoming more concrete so we can finally answer questions and concerns with actual plans. The public money that has gone into it requires and incentivizes us to serve the low-income people that we want to serve and that we are create, the church is allowing this space to be used for free. So it, to make that happen. Unlike some of my beloved neighbors, I actually have experience working in a commercial kitchen. And as much as I truly believe the kitchen will make an important difference in the local economy and improve the local food infrastructure, I also absolutely believe that it will continue to be a relatively small kitchen. So you can be shocked, shocked, that a small kitchen has doubled in size, but it still doesn't make it a ginormous kitchen. We anticipate right now, seven people will be able to work in the kitchen at any given time, 15 when we are offering classes. I honestly believe that the impacts on the immediate neighbors, including myself, will be limited and are being addressed by the church and the Kitchen Coalition. If I didn't believe it as a neighbor, I wouldn't want it in my backyard because it is in my backyard. Who will benefit here in Tacoma Park? Who has already benefited in the, in Tacoma Park? We've held food safety training, so these are people potentially who could use the kitchen. We've reached out and we've trained over 30 people. The majority of them are low, low and moderate income Tacoma Park residents. What they don't have is affordable space in their community. The community, the Crossroads Community Food Network has worked with several micro entrepreneurs who wanna start such businesses this past spring, five of them Tacoma Park residents. What they don't have is affordable kitchen space. We haven't yet been able to offer the classes that we want to, but it's the city of Tacoma Park who wants to offer these classes to our youth. And, you know, change is hard, and sometimes it's for the worse, and sometimes it's for the better. I think that the positive community benefits will continue from the community kitchen because one thing is certain. The commission, the kitchen will be built at Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church. And it will be done in a way that continues to benefit our immediate neighbors and the wider community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Vanita Myers. I live on Maple Avenue in Ward 4. The Grant Review Committee chose not to recommend that you grant, you fund the grant Cheer has asked for, but as a resident of Tacoma Park who has seen the impact Cheer has already made in the community and who knows the potential Cheer has to do many more great things for our community, I'm asking that you do fund all or part of the grant Cheer has requested. Cheer's unique capacity building and collaborative work is allowing it to provide those in need with information and access to resources for healthcare and other social services, to develop programs that provide young people with the tools necessary to be thriving and successful adults, to develop programs that address the unique and ongoing problems and issues common in tenant communities, and to empower people to change their lives for the better and building leadership in its wake. Our community needs the services that Cheer provides, but without your support and funding, it won't have them. Please support Cheer's efforts to improve the lives of the people in our community by providing it with much-needed funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre-
Good evening. My name is-
Es Dolores Badillo.
Dolores Badillo.
Vivo en 1103 de King Dry, Tacoma Park.
I live 1103, uh-
King Dry.
King Dry.
Me siento feliz de trabajar en Cheer.
I, I feel really happy to work for Cheer.
Una organización que proporciona información a todas las personas que necesitan ayuda.
An organization that gives information to everybody who needs the information.
En con respecto a encontrar, donde podemos encontrar salud, educación, comida, asuntos legales.
Information about health, education, legal, information, legal services.
Y todos los servicios que presta la comunidad al condado, el condado de Montgomery.
And all the services that the county gives to, to the community.
Quienes hacemos outreach, estamos convencidos que le encuentro día a día.
People who, we, that work with, with this kind of, in this kind of organization.
Con personas que con historias diferentes nos llenan el corazón y nos motivan a seguir adelante.
We encounter, encounter every day and meet people who are really impacting us with their stories.
Pues estamos convencidas de que hemos contribuido a encontrar un poquito de paz, de felicidad y tranquilidad en el, en su vida. de felicidad y tranquilidad en su vida.
By giving this help, we are pretty sure that we are making the difference, a difference in their lives.
También pensamos que la falta de, del recursos no impedirá que hagamos nuestra labor diaria.
We also know for sure that the lack of resources that, for example, right now we have, won't be an obstacle for us to continue with our work.
De servir a los demás.
To serve the others.
Pues la vida en comunidad es servicio y compromiso. Thank you.
Because life in a community is service and compromise. My name is Vanessa Pinto, but I live a block away from Tacoma. I live in Silver Spring. Just want to say that I work for Cheer also. I'm an outreach specialist and it's been really an amazing work that we've been doing. It's something that we are really proud of doing it every day. And I'm really proud of being part of a group that, as my coworker says, we offer our, to continue working in this job even though we won't receive a payment as a volunteer. So, thank you and I hope we can continue helping us.
Gracias.
Love it. Love it, love it, love it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Baker and I'm here tonight representing the Crossroads Community Food Network. And I first learned of Crossroads when I was living in Massachusetts and I was really inspired by their mission. So I was incredibly grateful a few months ago to have been offered an AmeriCorps Vista position and that's what brings me here tonight. So Crossroads applied for program and operational support, for general support to help our mission of improving access to fresh, local, and healthy foods, particularly to the at-risk populations, while simultaneously supporting those who grow the food and those who eat it. Since 2008, Crossroads has worked to decrease food insecurity, reduce diet-related illnesses, and generally improve the health and wellness of Tacoma Park residents. This year, we will directly serve about 4,000 people in the Crossroads community, or, excuse me, in the Tacoma Park community, specifically seniors, low-income individuals, and recent immigrants. Our farmers markets, or, excuse me, we feel that the programs that we have at Crossroads directly align with the goals of the grant program. The Crossroads Farmers Market has continued to grow in attendance since 2008 and it really is a testament to our long-term impact and to the continued support that we've been able to provide residents in securing resources and addressing the food access challenges. And now in the beginning stages of our micro-enterprise program, we really look forward to providing people with the chance to recognize their economic potential as well. But we would be nothing without our supporters. So first, I'd like to thank the Grants Committee or the Review Committee for their generous recommendation. I'd like to thank the council members for your time and as well as the broader community in general. We are so grateful for your support this far and we are really looking forward and would be thrilled at the prospect of your continued support. If granted, we will be sure to use the money wisely and we'll use it to leverage our funds to continue serving the Tacoma Park community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Love it.
I'm the founder and artistic director of Movius Contemporary Ballet and I'm speaking in support of the committee's recommendation to fund us for a season this year that brings contemporary ballet to Tacoma Park. Movius Contemporary Ballet is Montgomery County's premier contemporary ballet company. We've performed at Montgomery College, Sydney Harmon Hall, Capital Fringe Festival, the Portrait Gallery of the Smithsonian, and others, also at Dance Exchange up the street. And as part of our mission, we seek to bring world-class choreography in the contemporary ballet style to Montgomery County residents. We were very thrilled when we learned about the grant application because what we have found in the past few years is that the rental rates for theaters, the theater availability and the funding availability was taking us to Rockville or the district for the majority of our performances, even though we are rehearsing weekly just up the street in Tacoma Park. We were able to do a few informal showings at Dance Exchange over the past year where we were able to meet neighborhood residents and show them the choreography in progress, which were very rewarding. And we believe this grant will allow us to actually bring a regular series of contemporary ballet to Tacoma Park, as well as a spring performance actually in Tacoma Park. It just didn't seem fair that even though we're creating the work of art here because of the financing and the grant availability from other funding sources, we were ending up performing it elsewhere. So we really think that this grant recommendation will allow us to serve the side of Montgomery County as well as the other sides of Montgomery County where we perform. And I'm very honored to be recommended for a grant and we look forward to your hopefully positive endorsement.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bruce Baker. I'm, I live at 7724 Maple Avenue and I'm also the executive director of Cheer. I just, I can't say any more than really what some of the previous representatives from my organization have said about the reality of what Cheer is giving to this community. I just want to add one thing that wasn't, that they haven't touched on, is we are, in addition to doing a lot of work in health, doing health outreach and connecting, in the last, I'll just point out, in the last three months, our organization has connected 65 Tacoma Park residents to healthcare resources and other social supports. Our organization has created a health and wellness asset map that we are sharing with the other members of the Long Branch Health Enterprise Zone and they're using that to connect other people throughout the Long Branch and Tacoma Park area to healthcare resources with reference, with referrals to medical care providers, to mental health and to other kinds of social supports, such as housing and support and food supports, for people who just don't know where these resources are. And our job, we're a catalytic organization. We don't do direct services. What we do is we help connect people to resources. And so it's hard to compare our organization with another, with a direct service organization. And one other thing that's important that I want you to, that wasn't touched on earlier is that we are, have engaged in a Tacoma, the Tacoma Park Youth Development Collaborative. And this is, we had a youth summit on June of 2014, just two months ago. And we had 12 organizations that work with youth and other organizations, collaborating organizations, to form work groups that are going to try to address the issues of youth employment and help the city make, be more successful in getting more kids, getting youth prepared for employment and for college and for careers and ready for life. So at this stage, we are leveraged, our collaborative is now leveraging existing organizations and getting them ready to bring in new resources to the community, which is one of the things that Cheer does, is bring resources from other parts of the county and from other sources in to help our youth so that in the future, we can create a pipeline so that dozens of youth who aren't currently on a track to find employment or to find a career or to find, or find their way to college, that they can find that in the future years. And I hope you will find a way to help support our efforts in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Love it, love it, love it.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and Council Members. My name is Michael Lutske. I live in the 1,000 block of Elm Avenue and I just wanted to speak very briefly about the sidewalk work being done on Elm Avenue near Larch. I understand that the final, or set of designs have been done and that the next step is to have a community meeting where these designs can be reviewed and selected. That hasn't happened yet. My understanding is that was promised to have happened over the summer, so I just wanted to encourage action on that, on that part of the process. We live in a pretty peculiar area that right now sees 2,000 extra cars a day of traffic on our little stretch because of the Sligo Creek closure. Even before that closure, we had trouble with children, now close to three dozen, walking in the road to get to and from the bus and on weekends riding their bikes in the street because there are no sidewalks. So as winter's coming, you know, we'll have more of those issues, but with less light and, and more treacherous conditions. So there really is no time of year that's better or worse for us and our children's safety, but the sooner the better to move a process along that has already been started and partway through would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess we're near the end. Ron Hardy, Emergency Preparedness. We want, myself and the Emergency Preparedness Committee, want to remind everyone that September is National Preparedness Month, as the mayor stated earlier, and that this Thursday, 9/11, is the 13th anniversary of the attack on the World Trade Center. Terrorism is as much a threat as any natural disaster and people need to prepare for terrorism as they would for any natural disaster by making emergency kits and having plans for evacuation, how to stay in contact with their friends and family. Terrorism comes in many different forms, chemical, biological, nuclear, radiological, cyber attacks and explosions. It does not take many people to put an entire community in fear, such as the snipers did in October 2002 in this area. The Emergency Preparedness Committee and myself would like to remind everybody to make an emergency kit, have a plan, talk to their family about how they can stay connected, where they should meet during the disaster if they can't back to, get back to their home. For more information, go to Homeland Security's website, ready.gov, americanredcross.org, or you can go to the Tacoma Park homepage, go to committees, look for Emergency Preparedness Committee, and there's some links to get some information on how to make plan and prepare yourself for any natural or terrorism disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Lovelace.
Hello, my name is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. One thing I want to do first of all is thank the city of Tacoma Park for the wonderful Folk Festival we had today, yesterday. The weather was perfect for it, the sun was out, the people were out, and it was a perfect idea of community in action. If you want to know what community looks like, that is what community looks like. The Folk Festival was great, people coming by enjoying themselves, and that's what Tacoma Park stands for and I enjoyed it very much. My friend helped me get down to the festival and I had a wonderful time. And again, that's what community looks like when people get together and help each other, get to places and do things and participate. Second thing I want to do is ask people if it's possible to start a Collins program so the people who are disabled in their own homes or in the hospital or a nursing home can participate in our public comment period? Because somebody was asking me what the number was and I didn't know. I don't know if we have one or not, but I think we should start a program for Collins and I think that'd be great, program for Collins. Another thing too is we got to, I think we should boycott the NFL after what Ray Rice did to that, to his fiancee. He punched her in the face, knocked her unconscious. He punched her with all his might and all his weight and knocked her unconscious instantly and then dragged her out of the elevator where he was. And I think that that is an atrocious, atrocious attack on women's rights and peace in general. And the NFL is something that our kids look up to, they look up to it, and that is not a good role model. The Ravens should fire him immediately without any thing with indefinite or two weeks or whatever, two games or whatever. I think it should be forever. You attack a woman like that, you attack anybody like that, that's out, you're out. That's the way it should be, but they won't do that. And anybody who's watching the football game, whether it's the Ravens or it's the Washington team, which has that racist name and I'm not going to repeat it in public, I don't like it. You know, I love the Native Americans and I don't like what they're doing. Again, the NFL should make them change. If they don't, that's bad news, but I think they should, make them change their name, for one thing, and make Roy Rice fired from the NFL for all time and any other person who does that. And we should boycott the games until they do. We should say, the heck with football, out, until they do something about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Love it, love it, love it.
Hi, my name is Lorraine Pierceall. I'm with Historic Tacoma and I'm here tonight just to add a few comments because we are always concerned of our historic district and we were called and asked to participate in the issues that you heard earlier this evening with the neighbors and the church. And I, as neighbor Kathy said tonight, she was hopeful that things would be worked out. And I want to let you know that, that I'm very impressed that the pastor asked the HPC for a postponement of the hearing on their HOP to have a chance to really sit down and talk with the closing neighbors. Closing neighbors are very near and dear to me. I think that they have very special concerns and that there is more discussion that needs to be had, but my sense of the situation is that there is good spirit, that, that people want it all to work and I, I'm going to, I am very hopeful that, that there will be solutions to all these issues. It's going to take concerted effort to talk and work things through and I think that will happen. It won't happen with one meeting. I think there is a commitment though, that I am seeing to, to find a way to, to make the project successful for both the neighborhood, the closing neighbors and the church. So, but we are here, we're going to participate in meetings and I just wanted to let you know that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Love it.
Anybody else?
Evening, I'm Joe Brown, community activist. I'd like to start off the evening recognizing a deceased activist. His name was Bobby Coward. The name didn't fit him. He was 50 years old, was a strident advocate for the disabled, who was left paralyzed after he was involved with a, he saw a police chase. He tried to avoid it and he flipped over his car and he got broken neck and quadriplegic for 22 years. But without this man's activism, there wouldn't be full rights and accessibility to public accommodation services for persons with disabilities. And what Pat just spoke about, I think is a very good need in our community. There are people that can't make this meeting and can they call in? I recall that esteemed Council Member Siemens was operated on a few months ago and we had the privilege of listening to him as he called in. And maybe some other people can do that when they can't make the meeting here. Secondly, violence against women is totally unacceptable. I'm still shocked about what I found out today. It's just unbelievable that the NFL let this man hang in there and only give him a two game just, you know, without pay or whatever. And this man should lose his job if he had the NFL and we shouldn't go to these games anymore right now. Man spoke about terrorism. I was going to speak about the president's speech coming up about this ISIS situation. The more we go to war, and unneeded wars in Afghanistan and Iraq, the more terrorism we're going to face. It doesn't help to bomb and drone and kill innocent civilians. All you do is make more enemies, more Al Qaeda, more Taliban, and more nervousness than here in America because of what our military and our president and Congress and Pentagon caused around the world in this destruction. So that's what Homeland Security needs to work on, peace and not violence. And lastly, a high note, Tacoma... And lastly, a high note, Tacoma Park Folk Festival was, like Pat said, a tremendous day. I saw some of you sitting up there at the desks there yesterday. I said hi to all of you who were there, and it was a wonderful day. The music was great, the food was great, people were in a jovial mood, and, you know, it was just, you can't put it into words when you have a community that works together like that. Nobody was arguing, there was no fights, you know, it was just perfect. You know, everybody was shaking hands and, "Hey, how are you?" And Pat got, must have been 100 people came up to him and said, "Hey, Pat, thanks for being who you are and being our peace delegate in Tacoma Park, and thanks for the city of Tacoma Park appointing him that." You know, I want to applaud you all because he's really an activist for your community and for the city and for the whole country, really. He's one of a kind. Good night.
Thank you.
Buddy Daniels, 19 Sherman Avenue. Just for your information, and I agree with everything that Pat said about the NFL and certainly the Redskins, you know how I feel about Dan Snyder, but Rice was suspended from the Baltimore Ravens this afternoon at 2:00, and he's terminated. And the commissioner of the NFL stated, "No one else will be allowed to pick him up at any time and an indefinite time." That hasn't been determined for how long. And the CFL, which is the Canadian Football League, has followed suit and said, "No one will be allowed to pick him up there either." And I hope that time is forever, personally, but he has been terminated as of 2:00 this afternoon.
They should be permanent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Permanently, I hope.
Anybody else? We will now move to council comments. Oh, no, let me just do the proclamation first. I have a mayor proclamation declaring that September is Preparedness Month in Tacoma Park, and I encourage all residents, families, organizations, and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plans and to work together toward creating a more prepared and resilient society. And is there somebody here who's going to? Okay. Chair of the committee is here, so. If you want to.
Go up there.
She's wearing long pants.
Love it.
Love it.
Just very briefly, as we kind of cut off with our discussion about preparedness, but you will hear more from the committee throughout the council meetings on Monday nights in September with just these quick, brief updates on preparedness and how you can prepare yourselves and your families, because it is incredibly important, and we want to help to continue to promote that message throughout Tacoma. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Love it.
All right, now we'll go to council comments. Councilmember Stewart.
It's not working.
No, it's not.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out two things. Since the August recess, it's nice to be back, and a lot happened in August. One of the things I wanted to raise, and I'm happy to see on our rolling agenda that in October, as a council, we'll be coming back to the conversation about vacant and blighted properties. Unfortunately, there was another house fire on Kansas this past August, and I think, again, this is a conversation we'll be coming back to, but it's one that there's not going to be just one solution to this. And I'd just like to point out also that Historic Tacoma is here and the role that they're also playing in the community, helping particularly at the moment neighbors in the Pinecrest area address some of the issues there. So I'm looking forward to more conversation on this as a council. The other thing I wanted to say tonight goes back to what the gentleman was talking about regarding the relationship between community residents and law enforcement here in Tacoma Park. I think the incident in Ferguson and what happens around our country is a reminder of the harm and injustice that happens when there's racism and also when we don't prioritize having ongoing communications between law enforcement and the community. Building and maintaining relationships isn't something that we check a box on and say, "Okay, we did this, now we can move on." It's ongoing. New people move into our community, kids grow up to be young people, we get more officers sworn in. It's an ongoing commitment. And I think that in particular, as the gentleman pointed out tonight, it's important for us to listen to and understand the experiences of the young people who live in our community, particularly those who are most affected by the inequalities in our society. And this is something that I know the Making a New United People, Man Up, which is an organization here in Tacoma Park, has already begun that process so that we begin to listen to young people instead of talking at them. And I'm looking forward to working more with them and with the city council to hear what their concerns are in ways that we can improve relationships. That's it.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. I also had a blast at the Tacoma Park Folk Festival. I talked to Mr. Brown and Mr. Lovelace and a number of other people in the room there. It was great to see you. And of course, I want to extend my thanks to the committee that organizes the festival and to everyone who volunteered and was involved in some way, the performance, of course, also. Thank you all who came out to testify this evening and to the grant review committee chairs who presented the recommendations. I note a number of people here in the audience who I know are concerned about issues that are on the agenda tonight who did not choose to speak, so I recognize that you're here. So once again, thanks for coming up. About the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church and the kitchen, I did participate in a meeting along with Mayor Williams, Ms. Pierceall, with City Manager Kenner, with Laura Barclay, who's here, Jill Fiesley, who's here last, and Pastor Mark Reiner of the church last week specifically to talk about the parking and traffic congestion problem around the church and in other old Tacoma streets, especially joining the business district. And we discussed some possible avenues to explore for solutions that will ease the traffic flow, the existing traffic flow and parking problems, and of course, try to prepare for the impact that the church kitchen will have. I want to announce two events. One, the developer for the Tacoma Metro site, EYA, is holding what they characterize as a community informational event on Saturday, September 13th, from 10:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Tacoma Education Center. That's in the District of Columbia at 7010 Piney Branch Road. That's the intersection of Piney Branch and Cedar Street Northwest. They will, they say, brief attendees on their plans for development of the site. There is a long process ahead for that development. I'm not going to go into that now, but I would encourage anyone who is interested in having a discussion with the developer to attend that. Again, Saturday, September 13th, 10:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Tacoma Education Center, 7010 Piney Branch Road Northwest. And then Pat Rumbaugh, the Play Lady, has asked me to announce the next play day for Tacoma Park is Saturday, September 27th at Tacoma Park Middle School from 10 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It promises to be another really engaging event for everyone who wants to play in Tacoma Park, which Pat hopes is everyone, with a great program. Thank you.
Other council comments? I've got a few. One thing I wanted to announce is that I will be at the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Conference this week in Annapolis, and one of the things that will be happening on Friday there is that the Sustainable Maryland Certified Program will be announcing the new municipalities who are going to be formally joining the program, not joining the program, but get the first level of recognition. And the city of Tacoma Park will be getting that first level of recognition as a Sustainable Maryland Certified Community. My understanding is that the submission from the city, there was a possible 700 points we needed to get, 150 to get the certification, and we got 409 points. So we're well on our way toward additional levels of certification. And I know that some of the members of the Committee on the Environment will be there in Annapolis on Friday with me to accept that recognition. I heard some concerns from a resident about noise from backup generators at various locations when the power goes out, and I just wanted to make sure that we have some discussion and understanding of our noise ordinance, particularly around backup generators, and also concerns that I've heard from the chief about other complaints about noise in the area of Old Town with various activities going on and kind of revisiting the level of our noise ordinance and how we measure things. And I heard some concerns from the chief about the difference between our ordinance and the county ordinance and the ability to enforce the levels that we have. And finally, I just wanted to add my voice to what Councilmember Stewart was saying about the discussion about our youth and our police department. I was also part of the discussions with a number of other council members, with the executive director of Making a New United People, Man Up, and they just wanted to add my voice to say that I was encouraged that they're going to have some forum with our youth and some police in the next couple of weeks, and we're hoping that some of the questions that come from that, some of the information that comes from that, will potentially give us some information to have additional conversations with a wider part of the community on this issue.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to add that I think the, as we look at the interaction between the police and our community members, I think it is, as Councilmember Stewart said, important to look at that with our youth, but it's, I think, important to look at that with all community members, too. Thank you, regardless of age.
City manager's comments.
Thank you, just a few. One is I also want to add my voice of thanks and support to the Committee on the Environment in particular for the Maryland Certified Designation. It's a, at times, a bit of a grueling process where you have to get a green team. There's a lot of meetings that they went through, and they really have been steadily working really over the past little bit more than a year to make sure that Tacoma Park was able to get that certification. So it's really a lot rested on them, and they did a fantastic job in addition to many members of our Public Works Department who helped them. But a special thanks to the Committee on the Environment for that. Just wanted to mention that on September 20th, we have our lifelong Tacoma event. This is the first annual lifelong Tacoma event, which is an event specifically designed for those residents in particular that are 55-plus. There's going to be sessions on housing, transportation, health, nutrition, fire safety, emergency preparedness, fitness. There'll be health screenings, we will have live music, poetry, you name it. It will all be located here. It is on Saturday, September 20th, in this building from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., so we're very excited about that. And also a big thanks to Karen Marishow, our lifelong Tacoma program manager, who has been spearheading putting that first annual event together. The parking pay station, I know earlier this past year, we talked a little bit about parking meters and pay stations and so forth, and one of the outcomes of that conversation was an opportunity, really, to test out a parking pay station in an area where we have sort of a concentrated amount of parking spots. And so based upon that discussion and some of the interactions we'd had previous to then, we have installed a parking pay station, which is now at the Tacoma Junction Lot. It is technically active as of now, I think it was active as of September 2nd. It will become something that we will start to enforce September 17th. It's 25 cents for 15 minutes with a four-hour max, no overnight parking, which is the way that it is currently right now, and the hours of operation are going to be 7 a.m. to 11 p.m. And so we are looking forward to doing that again. This will be the first time, I think, that in Tacoma Park we will have a parking pay station, so we're also looking to get some feedback on that opportunity. Just wanted to give just a very quick update. Over the summer, one of the things that we, city staff had been working with Montgomery County staff on is trying to move forward on the opportunities around municipal tax duplication. One of the things that came out of last October's Go Committee meeting with Montgomery County was this idea of a working work group comprised of Montgomery County folks as well as municipal folks to talk about how we get some resolution on municipal tax duplication. The first meeting occurred last week, I believe, which Suzanne Ludlow, our deputy city manager, is the representative to that committee. I know that going forward, she will have some additional status reports for the council. I think that the first meeting was mostly an opportunity for the folks to get to know each other and to lay out some initial thoughts. And I know that the county council has indicated an interest to trying to have some meetings that happen in September and October, such that there's a proposal or at least a framework or something to work from by the end of October. So we look forward to that and obviously making sure that Tacoma Park's voice gets heard in the discussions around that. Just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Grimes' comment about the EYA meeting. The city TV will also be there that day, so we will be videotaping that. Technically, at this point, we're not really sure on what their format's going to be, so we will work on that, but city TV will be there, and we will be broadcasting, we'll be broadcasting that event. And I think just finally, just a reminder that myself and the deputy city manager and our recreation director will be out next week at the ICMA National Conference, which is in Charlotte, and so just wanted to remind people of that. Thank you.
And is there anything that you can add where there's any indication about the tax duplication issue being resolved or not resolved as far as our next year's FY16 budget?
Thank you. In that conversation, one of the concepts that came up, because again, if you remember from the budget discussion this past year, municipal tax duplication from the county provides a significant amount of revenue, especially general fund revenue that the city gets. And so having an idea about what that number's going to be as soon as possible greatly impacts our ability to fund things in the existing and in future fiscal years. So a question that came up in that conversation was, does the county right now anticipate having an answer on municipal tax duplication in time for the fiscal year 16 budget, which would roughly be March, April, and May of next year? The answer that was received was that they did not anticipate everyone coming to agreement or having a framework in place by then, and so the expectation that we will be continuing to confirm with them is that our amount for municipal tax duplication that we received in fiscal year 15 would be similar, if not more, in fiscal year 16. So that is the understanding that we will continue to try to confirm as we move forward with that discussion.
And one additional clarification on the pay station. I'm assuming it takes some kind of credit card in addition to cash?
It takes credit card and it takes coins. I believe that dollar bills, similar to some of the ones in the district and other places, dollar bills tend to jam and make the machine a little bit more fidgety, so I think it's coin and credit card that it accepts.
And so it's those, not a parking app?
It's not a parking app, no.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Grimes.
Mr. Kenner, I have a request for you. If, not now, I'm not expecting it now, but at one of the coming council meetings, could you please present an update on Dog Park development?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to remind everyone that tomorrow at 7:30 at Wilkinson Hall at Washington Vintage University, there will be a meeting for the Carroll Avenue Bridge Detour, so please come if you're available. If you can't, the meeting will be televised, and you can watch it at a later date, but it's very important. Thank you.
Which also reminds me that tomorrow is the opening dedication of the new ball field at Washington Vintage University, which I'm sure a number of us will be at. Which I'm sure a number of us will be at. Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kenner, Mr. Grimes reminds me of the Dog Park, and I wanted to ask that as we prepare information on the Dog Park and think about naming the Dog Park, that we refrain from using the name Hefner Dog Park, because it's already confusing some people about the location, since Hefner Park is on the other side of the valley from the intended location of the Dog Park. So, I think it would be better to name it, you know, Darwin Dog Park or something like that that's more indicative of the location. Thank you.
Okay. I think that takes care of various comments. So, we will move to adoption of minutes. We have three sets before us, April twenty-first, May twelfth, and July twenty-first. Somebody like to move adoption of the minutes?
Moving.
Moved by Councilmember Stewart, seconded by Councilmember Mail. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes passed unanimously. That takes care of the minutes, and we will now go to our work session, and we will have a discussion of the community grant applications.
Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Grimes.
It is with regret that I must recuse myself from this discussion because I have a conflict of interest. My wife is a current paid employee of Cheer, one of the applicants. I consulted Assistant City Attorney Ken Sigmund, who is here in the room earlier today, and he reminded me of advice given by the city attorney to the council last year, that I must recuse myself from discussion of all grants, because discussion of any one of them for or against could influence the funding of the other grants. So, I'm actually going to go sit in the audience for the duration.
Okay.
Well, it's not so all right, but okay.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Since I recused myself last year, I'd like to clarify that this year, I, neither I nor my wife are involved in any of these projects, either as volunteers or as paid employees. So, I'm not recusing myself.
Okay. Any other recusals? Gee, we lost somebody else, too. Councilmember Smith. Where'd he go? Oh, okay. He's coming back.
Mosley.
All right. Let's see. The first thing I want to do, I want to make sure I got all my notes here. I think that we've, we've got some information from the, from the committee. We had some additional information in our conversation with the committee and with Ms. Danes. I think one thing that isn't clear from the information that we have so far is the, the one that is in the Program and Operational Support Grant Applications, the Crossroads Community Food Network. If we can just get a little clarification, oh, there you are, on, on what that is, because it's, it's a little bit hard for us to tell from the information that we have here exactly what that is intended to cover. And I would say, just as a general point, I think it would be helpful if the, the, more of the information on these grant requests were maybe put up on the city website or made available in some way, so that for anybody who has additional questions, who wants to get into some of the details, that we can do that and not be kind of operating a little bit in the dark on what the, some of these proposals are.
I sent a Dropbox for the council last week, and sent the links to all of the council members. If you haven't been able to access it, please let me know, and I'll walk you through the process. It's pretty straightforward, and all the information is on there. The city clerk and I have chatted about the, posting the applications online, and once we go through and finish redacting them, as far as specific, like, social security numbers and things like that, those will also be available online before the council makes a final decision regarding any committee recommendations.
And is, do you anticipate that in the future, you might be able to have a timeframe enough so that you can redact that and have it up before the, before we have a presentation?
We're going to, yes. Yes.
Okay. Good. And then, the specific question on the Crossroads Community Food Network?
Crossroads Community Food Network. The council may recall that in the past, you have funded specific projects within that organization. Everything from fresh texts up at the Crossroads Farmer's Market, to cooking classes, to outreach, to students at the Rolling Terrace, I believe, and training programs for urban farmers. This program, or this request, is broader than that that you've considered in the past. It's for the overall programming requirements of the organization. So, it will, it's not targeted for a specific program or activity, but it will includes the operations as a whole, dealing with staffing costs, et cetera.
So, it's not?
It's not just for a shared community kitchen. It's not just for the farmer's market. It's not just for the nutrition classes up at the elementary school.
It's, it's overall operations?
It is overall operational.
Okay. And the, we heard from a number of people tonight, neighbors, about concerns about the community kitchen. And so, the, my, my sense is that we, we might kind of hold off on any commitment on that money until some additional conversations have taken place with the neighborhood. If we do that, is, is that, does that somehow hold up any of this process? Can you just give us a sense of timelines of where we are in this and what the expectation is, and how it, how it affects things as far as the grant cycle and the fiscal year? And just give us a sense of, you know, what, what, what we're dealing with here in terms of timing?
If the council wishes to defer any decisions regarding the community kitchen at the Presbyterian Church, I'd encourage you to do that. You can still go ahead and take action on any of the other recommendations that the Grants Committee has forwarded, and that will not delay that process. I would hate to have everyone else get held up because of concerns regarding one specific project. And then, if, if the direction this evening is to do that, we would just exclude that particular application from the capital projects grant. Another option you have, if you so desire, is, one of the challenges that the review committee had was you have this defined set of, defined pot of money. You only have so much. And going through and evaluating the different applications in terms of merit. So, yes, all of the applications are worthy, but they went through and decided which ones seemed to be the most appropriate for funding based on the amount of dollars that they had available. So, if you were to decide not to fund the community kitchen, which I'm not encouraging or discouraging you from doing, you could reprogram those dollars and supplement, to some extent, the program and operating budget or grant category, if you will. The committee has already done that to some extent with leftover money that wasn't allocated from the capital grants and from the operating, or the cultural STEM grants, and put it into the program and operating support category, which, again, there was the greatest interest in.
And if we were to choose to, to hold a piece of the grant funding community kitchen or otherwise, and awaiting some additional conversations or additional information, what's the timeframe where, kind of give us a sense of, gee, you could hold that for X amount of time before there begins to be concern about, gee, is this putting it too late in the process, too late in the year? Any concerns that way?
I don't believe there would be any concerns. I mean, the further, further off you push it, the more problematic it becomes to expend the funds within the fiscal year. But, there are ways of addressing that in terms of extending the term of the, the agreement or in carrying the funds over.
Okay.
You have options. So, I wouldn't let that discourage you from making a reasoned decision.
So, the preference is that it's, that there's no problem to delay, we can delay for a while. The longer we delay, the more other mechanisms have to be brought into play to deal with kind of end of the fiscal year.
Correct. Approving it in June would be bad, but January's not a problem.
Okay. Okay. Good. So, that's some overall guidance on what we might want to do and some parameters. My sense is that, given the concerns that we've had, we might want to hold off on that piece. But, from what you're saying about the Crossroads Community Food Network, that with that not particularly aimed at the community kitchen, that, that may not be of the same concern as the dedicated funding?
There are two distinct projects, two distinct organizations, and two different types of requests.
Right. Okay. And so, there were some other concerns that I heard in the first part. Does, do people want to make recommendations or comments about how you want to proceed or any particular changes you want to make, or go with the committee's recommendations? Any particular comments?
I'd like the committee's recommendations.
Other comments?
I, I would just, I guess I, the one comment I have is the lack of funding for Cheer this year. And having spent time looking at the applications, and I just, I want to thank the committee again, because I spent my Sunday afternoon reading through all these, and it was a lot of materials to get through. And I know it was stated earlier that there was something not filled in on Cheer's application. I just, I guess that would be the only question I still sort of have remaining, is whether or not it would be possible to allocate any funds to them.
If I may speak for the Grants Review Committee. I didn't participate in the conversation, but one of the decisions that was made fairly early in the conversation was to work within the requests that the organization submitted. So, if somebody said they needed X number of dollars to make this happen, an effort was made not to drop that amount down dramatically or to increase it just because they had extra money left over. That being said, if you look at the program and operating expenditure, most of the requests are fairly large, and the amount of money available is fairly limited. So, you could do one big project and fund a couple of the smaller requests, or do what they did in terms of splitting the difference between two fairly large program requests that have a direct impact on Tacoma Park residents. You could drop those two, fund Cheer. You could give everybody a third of what they requested. I mean, you have that flexibility, though, speaking, paraphrasing from the Grants Review Committee, if you reduce the amount of funds that are awarded to projects dramatically, it really does have an impact in terms of whether or not they're able to produce what they've indicated that they would be. So, you would have to go back and renegotiate that conversation with them. But, you have that option. The grant reviews has gone through and done a careful analysis of them. Their recommendations are just that, recommendations. The final decision rests with the council.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of overall comments. Like Councilmember Smith, I'm inclined to go with the committee's recommendations. Overall, to me, the Dropbox approach, it just provides a lot of separate documents as opposed to the one most relevant document that has the key summary of points.
That was not our original intent, but that's how it ended up working out. We're making some changes in terms of the next grant review round, so it's a single document in a PDF.
And I think it would be great to have, for example, one, a cover sheet that goes in the, either in the packet that goes to council or in the public packet that is from the committee that emphasizes the relative strengths and weaknesses.
We can, we can do that.
So, just something that gives sort of an overall, you know, one-stop-shop way to look at the, look at the projects. If we were going to make, well, let me back up. On the community kitchen proposal, I'm just, I don't quite understand whether the money they're requesting is tied to the community concerns that we have. So, for example, in the past, we funded training in the kitchens, which is training regardless of whether it's, it's, it's big or small, you know, has parking or doesn't have parking. Is the, is the money requested directly tied to, to any of the issues that were brought forth today?
It is in the sense that it's a capital and project. So, they're requesting money to finish building or completing the renovation of the space.
Okay. Thank you. If, and I support the mayor's proposal to maybe hold off on that project. I similarly have concerns about the absence of Cheer funding. And I guess, to me, maybe the way that I would try to cover that, keeping in mind what you just said about, you know, low versus high funding for individual projects, I guess the fifteen thousand dollars for, which mostly goes to staff costs for Tacoma Ensemble, might be one, one place that I would try to find five thousand dollars or some amount of money if we weren't to fund the community kitchen project. That maybe putting together some money from that project along with, from the community kitchen money, along with a reduction in ensemble funding, might be one way that I would choose to fund it. But, that's, I think, for me at least, that's contingent on what we would end up deciding on, the kitchen funding.
And if you can remind us on the, on the grant allocation to the, to the three categories? I don't remember how we arrived at that allocation.
It was part of the budget discussion. So, when we went through and did the, had the conversation regarding the grant guidelines and the review process, recommendations were made in terms of how the funding that had, the council has historically provided for both the small grants and the large grants programs could be divvied up, if you will, between these various categories. And the recommendations of staff were based on historical trends that the council had awarded in the past.
So, it was based on historical trends, and it was a percentage of whatever dollars there might be?
A little of all of it, plus an anticipation of what projects might be down the pipeline that would fit in various categories.
So, that there's nothing in particular that precludes us from shifting that around, as was done?
The council has that flexibility, I believe, to do that.
So, moving from category to category?
Correct.
Doesn't involve a lot of?
As long as you don't go over the hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Right.
Which then starts a whole different conversation.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple more. If I, I forgot one thing, which is that I understand the guidance that staff gave to the committee in terms of the three-year clock on funding, continuous funding of projects starting now. It would have been my preference, and I thought the way we had discussed it was, looking back to some extent, certainly it was in, in my time in the council, that has come up every year in discussions about grants. So, I would prefer to go back, but, you know, here we are. But nonetheless, I think it's going to be very helpful for two years from now to have clear guidance in place of what it means, what sort of projects would count as continuing funding and thus be ineligible versus what is a distinct project. And it, there's probably a lot of hair splitting and gray area there, but I think to the extent that staff could develop a one-pager or two paragraphs or something at some point this year and have council review it, that would put us in place, get it when we get to that point, to be able to, you know, have operational guidance. Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to back up a little to the previous discussion and just thank again the committee, because, you know, as we now get down into the details that the committee worked so hard on, it's a, I can see the difficulty you all faced with trying to, to set priorities for a lot of projects that are all very interesting and probably good for the community. I certainly support Councilmember Stewart and Councilmember Mail's desire to fund Cheer. I think it's, again, the coalition of organizations in the county that Cheer has put together and the work that they've done, and the way they've been able to leverage our previous grant, grants to their organization, I think speaks well, and I'd like to see the momentum of Cheer continue. And I'm suggesting that maybe we do reopen that, because we do have the power to shift money from one of these categories to another, but we also have the power to add additional money. And so, I would propose that we add twenty-five thousand dollars for. And so I would propose that we add $25,000 for Cheer, and take it out of the other pocket.
Take it out of which pocket?
Budget allocation.
Okay. Councilmember Smith, I think, since you keep showing up as clerk or manager.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I would like to say that, you know, once again, I would like to find funding for Cheer. It's very important that this organization continues its work in the committee, in the community. And I would like to say that I would support Councilmember Mail's proposal of taking $5,000 from Tacoma Ensemble, and the $10,000 that it appears that the council is going to table from the Community Kitchen, and package that together, and allocate that to Cheer. Thank you.
I've heard a couple of different proposals at the moment on how to address money for Cheer, and I'll make a different proposal. What I'd like to do is to hold off on the Community Kitchen $10,000, and then have a recommendation back from staff and the committee about what other places that there might be able to be some reductions, without changing the ability to do the program that they put in. If, and it might, and I'm assuming that you'd probably have to come back with that next week, as opposed to come up with it tonight, so that there's a recommendation on how we might kind of pull together some of this money. And once we have that, then we see if there's a shortfall for an amount that we might want to do for Cheer, and then know whether it would entail additional money or some other way of dealing with it.
Mayor, just so that, I guess, staff and the committee are clear, is there a number that they should be coming back with in terms of looking at it? Is, the original request from Cheer is $25,000. Is that the number to come back with in terms of, or is there a number less than that?
I don't know yet. My sense is that the $25,000 was their request. How do people want to deal with it in terms of, well, gee, if it was, if it wasn't clear to the committee? It's like, what I don't particularly want to do is just kind of run over the committees, some of their deliberations, and look, how they looked at this whole package, and just say, oh, well, we're just going to do X, and that's the amount, and that's it. But some recognition that they were applying the criteria that we asked them to, that they had this comprehensive discussion, and so an ability to come back with potentially a little lower number.
Well, that was why I made my suggestion, the way I did, is to support the recommendations of the committee itself, but still be able to address the desires of the council.
If, I have an idea, if you're open to that. If you're to, if you're to look at the committee's current recommendations for funding for EduCare and for the Crossroads Community Food Network, that's roughly $40,000. One of the options you have with, while maintaining within your budget, and adhering to the recommendations of the committee in funding the council's, furthering the council's interest in funding Cheer, is you could take that dollar amount and divvy it up between the three organizations. Because frankly, none of them are getting exactly what they asked for, because they're fairly extensive. We can re-approach each of the groups to see if, I don't have my calculator with me, so I don't know what 40 divided by 3 is.
It's like 13,000 each, if it's divided three ways instead of two.
At least for me, that wouldn't be my preference. My preference would be, we're talking about feeding people who need food, arts, and small microenterprize development. And, you know, I would take it from 5,000 from the Tacoma Ensemble, and potentially the 10,000 from the Presbyterian Church. And I would therefore fund Cheer at 15,000 instead of 25, consistent with what the mayor was just suggesting.
All right, I'll second that.
Yeah, I agree, I think.
Making the motion.
Yeah, that's proposed.
Okay, and I'll second.
Okay, well, it's a work session, so.
So I agree what Mayor Williams said, that I think the work of the committee should be recognized. And I appreciate the criteria you use, so I'm not feeling necessarily the need to say, oh, we need to reinstate, or do what each of the groups requested. And I, so I agree with potentially taking the money from the Tacoma Ensemble, $5,000. I'm less clear on the process and how we would proceed with the Community Kitchen at the moment, and that $10,000, so I feel like I want to think about that for a moment. And given where, what Crossroads had asked for, and what we're giving them, and just having looked at their proposal, taking more money away from them actually is one of my least favorite options. So I'd actually like to keep Crossroads where they are.
So just to, I mean, I guess the way it could work is we could move forward with all of the grants that haven't been part of this discussion in the last few minutes, and leave the Presbyterian Church, the Ensemble, and Cheer as three to resolve at a future meeting.
And we could also, we're not pressed to do anything in the next week or so. We could, we could get some additional information, we could.
Correct.
There could be additional conversations between the Community Kitchen and the neighborhood. We could hold off maybe a month on all of this, and, you know, see how things go, and get a little additional information, some recommendations from staff and the committee, and an ability to kind of massage this a little bit differently. We don't have to go forward.
The one project that it could potentially impact, if I understand correctly, is the Tacoma Ensemble, because they're looking at doing a winter, spring, fall series. So that one is actually, has more of a timeliness to it than potentially the other two.
Do you do a $10,000 award?
Sure, we could, we could, if any of them that are timely, that are not kind of involved in any of this discussion, if so, that even if we're going to end up giving Tacoma Ensemble 10 instead of 15, can we, can we say, there's 10, and we're still discussing the other five? And we, and for the docs in progress, or whatever else there might be, and come back with that in a timely fashion?
Why not go ahead and just make the decision the way that?
Well, we don't have Councilmember Schultz here. I don't know if people feel like he needs to weigh in on this. We had some, we weren't necessarily coalescing around one option. I didn't hear movement toward one option, so I was looking for a little bit of time.
We'll move towards that option.
Yeah, well, that.
I support it.
Now, there you go, we're moving. Councilmember Stewart?
So the option that we were discussing is taking 5,000 from Tacoma Ensemble, and the 10,000 from the Presbyterian Church, and moving it to?
Correct.
Cheer. Cheer.
Although, I wasn't supporting making the decision tonight to do that. I was supporting not moving forward next week with a council action that either awarded or didn't award that money. I was proposing we move forward with the other 90% of what's laid out here. And for those three projects, that those remain on the table till we get the information we're seeking post the community meeting that's happening around the Presbyterian Church. And that those three have an additional discussion like we have tonight.
And all I was thinking was, if we did that, the solution, once we get the information, tends to be a budget amendment, add more money to the grants. And I'm not sure I want to go there. So I was trying, I was trying to preserve the ability to do it within what we put in the budget.
And I'm, I don't really want to go there either, in terms of adding more money. So it's a choice, for me.
How long, how, when would we endanger somebody who needs to know fairly quickly? Do we have a couple of weeks?
I can check. With, with all of the arts projects, frankly, they're hoping to kick it off right away, because now is when you get your, this is, this is the season for arts and series stuff, and things like that. But it's easy enough to proceed with what Councilmember Mail is proposing without having a tremendous impact on people. And if you decided to come back with the additional five for the Ensemble, for example, that's, nobody's going to say no to that.
Right. I was just trying to avoid having a finite pot of money and going, oh, to do what we want to do, we've got to add.
You might have to do that.
I don't want to do that.
I know you don't want to do that. I was really, frankly, hoping you wouldn't, but it's council's decision.
So can we hold off, can, can we get information back on any of this, and any recommendations from staff and the committee that might open up some, a little, a little bit of ability to do more? And we might be able to do something in, say, two weeks, with a clearer sense of how we want to proceed, holding some in abeyance, and not lock ourselves into having to provide more money?
We can do that, I just don't, for me at least, I don't understand why, if we just hold off on three projects, we end up having to spend more money? Because if we, if we get to next week, or two weeks, whenever the point is, and we find out that, we come, we reach a conclusion that says, wow, we really want to fund the Presbyterian Church $10,000, then for me, at that point in time, I would stick with that allocation, and I would stick with the, putting the remaining five into the Ensemble. It's only if we find out that there's some reason why we wouldn't want to fund the Presbyterian Church project, that then, to me, I would move money, not, not add money.
So, but where's the money for Cheer come from?
From the 5,000 from the Ensemble, and the 10,000 from the church. So I'm not talking about adding, I'm just talking about moving it between those three projects.
Okay, so if people are comfortable with that, I could go for that. There's movement.
I just want to summarize it one more time. Confused on the last part. So the recommendation is to move forward with all of the other grant proposals, save Cheer, the Presbyterian Church, and then is it to only move forward with 10,000 for the Tacoma Ensemble, or not at all? Just 10,000?
Just 10,000.
Okay, so to be clear, the only thing that's really, would be unfunded then, would, amount of money then left is this $15,000.
Correct.
Correct.
So just wanted to be clear about that.
Not to muddy the water any further, which I probably will do, and I apologize. Today was the deadline for the Community Development Block Grant Program applications.
Are you going to start pushing that around?
Nobody applied.
Moving something over?
I didn't get any applications.
Oh.
Which really, frankly, surprised me, that's very unusual. So some of the projects, specifically EduCare, is an easy fit for that program, given the population that they are targeted for. And they have experience with the Community Development Block Grant Program, and are familiar with all the reporting requirements. That may be, I mean, we can go through and figure it out a little bit, but that might be, rather than this pot of money, we'll do this pot of money, since no one else has asked for it, and then free up some of the funding for the other project.
Sounds like a potential solution.
Maybe that's just the fourth component of what we just talked about, which is just another review of the Community Development Block Grant, just to see if there's a way to.
And how much money are we talking?
It's only, it's $13,500.
So is your suggestion, then, that we add a fourth project to the ones we're sort of pulling out?
That would be the easiest, yes, EduCare, please.
Okay.
I can split that.
Good. We have agreement on that?
Yes.
So it's those four pieces? Okay. I want to make sure everybody's clear, you got what you need, yes?
Mayor, I have a clarifying question.
Yes.
So then, you're saying, so there would be council action next week on all the others? The others, just not those four? But those four would be?
And of the four, there's three that involve recommended money from the committee, and then Cheer, which didn't get a recommendation. Those four kind of hold in abeyance for consideration in how we do it.
But the Ensemble would get the 10?
10.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you all. All right. Let's take a short break. Tacoma Park Code Title VIII business to add restrictions on the commercial use of polystyrene We're joined by City Attorney Ken Sigmund, and at some point we'll also hear from Brenda Platt, who has one or two things that she needs to tell us about this.
Actually, Councilmember Grimes has been the driving force behind this, so he's going And we are at Agenda Item Three, which is a discussion of the ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code Title VIII business to add restrictions on the commercial use of polystyrene We're joined by City Attorney Ken Sigmund, and at some point we'll also hear from Brenda Platt, who has one or two things that she needs to tell us about this.
Actually, Councilmember Grimes has been the driving force behind this, so he's going Well, thank you.
But he won't be able to be the driving force on Carlos whatever day it is coming up?
No, I've signed the car-free pledge for September 22nd, I believe it is. But I'm, I'll be in the driver's seat of my bicycle. There's only room for me, though. So I do note that we have a memo from the city attorney here in the packet that's a preliminary legal analysis. Thank you for that. So this is a carryover, as discussed on June 16th by the council. On June 16th, we had before us a much more extensive draft ordinance, which would not only have done what this one does, which is to ban polystyrene use. It would also have required the owners of food service business, of commercial properties that house food service businesses, and of apartment buildings, multifamily apartment buildings that are larger than the size currently served by city waste hauling, to offer the collection of food waste for composting. And it would also have, it did on June 16th, also include a provision addressing the gap where Montgomery County Recycling Code does not apply in Tacoma Park. All of these provisions, except for polystyrene, have been removed, and I will briefly state why. As agreed on June 16th, we didn't vote this before recess because we realized in discussions with the committee on the environment and with experts such as Brenda Platt, who is here, with Ms. Braithwaite and other city staff, that we need to do some more research to establish the feasibility of doing these additional provisions. I think that the council was ready to go forward with them if we had established a feasibility. There is a very difficult situation with facilities that can take compostables, organics, food wastes for composting. Currently, the city's food wastes are transshipped via Annapolis Junction, then by train to Wilmington, Delaware, and the facility there is under stress. There are facilities that are at smaller scales in a number of the counties surrounding us, but not Montgomery County. And we've been looking into the availability of facilities for processing compostables, and they're not there yet. So that's why these provisions have been removed. I did talk to a number of the waste haulers that are currently serving Tacoma Park commercial buildings and apartment buildings, and at least a couple of them do offer food waste collection, but once again, they send their stuff to the same facility that, as I said, is stressed. And one of them in particular, Progressive, which serves several of the Montgomery Housing Partnership-owned buildings along Maple Avenue here, I didn't check about Flower Avenue, and also the Deauville Apartment Building, which is just on the other side of Piney Branch Elementary School from this building. Progressive does offer food waste composting. And we had discussed in the spring that we maybe as a city would want to enter into some kind of pilot for these larger buildings and commercial facilities, and that seems the way to go forward with expanded food waste composting beyond single-family homes. So it's my intention, and I would hope the council would support this, I expect you would, to work with the committee on the environment, city staff, Ms. Platt, and any other parties to explore whether these apartment buildings would voluntarily use their current waste haulers to pilot food waste composting in these other buildings. So that's all I'll say about that. About the polystyrene bill, we did push back the dates on this a little bit. There is a Montgomery County ordinance that is going to be introduced by Councilmember Hans Reimer, whom I met with in August and then spoke with subsequently about this. Ms. Platt, once again, consulted with county staff, county council staff on that kind of stuff. I had originally thought that we, personally, I had thought that we should have a hearing, a public hearing on this bill because of the changes. The changes are much smaller now, and I would actually ask the mayor and my colleagues to go forward with voting sessions, too, would be required on this Young Activist Act of 2014 without a public hearing. We've been hearing about this for years, and there has been no controversy surrounding this that has come up any time in this year, certainly that I can think of. Mayor Williams, you've agreed to recognize Ms. Platt, who has a few comments.
Thank you, Brenda Platt. Just on the Young Activist Club, I forgot to mention in the public comment period that a few of the club members went to some of the businesses at New Hampshire and East-West Highway 410. So we've been focusing on Old Town before and not really Langley Park and that area. And I just wanted to share, we went to the, well, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing it right, my apologies, Walea Ethiopian Restaurant and Los Pollos. And we also visited the people working at the food truck, which we already switched. And the response from the businesses, meeting with the kids, was so positive. And Mario, I don't remember his last name, owns Los Pollos, which is completely take out, all styrofoam cups, plates, clam shells, everything, styrofoam, really told the kids, you know, if you'd called me, it wouldn't have been the same. He was so great. He said, thank you for coming in, talking to me, explaining the health issues. I don't want to be providing products that are bad for my customers. And he said, and of course, it's the law, he would abide by it. He did want to know about alternatives. So I think this idea of, you know, providing that information is really critical. When we asked about suppliers for him, he said, you know, he's 12 different suppliers, so price does make a difference. Some of the more recent research that the Institute for Political Self-Reliance has done around the country is showing that the price of styrofoam, interestingly enough, is going up, the trend, and the price of alternatives is going down. But I think one of the benefits of making this, not requiring the compostability and the other stuff, is that the substitutes for just styrofoam, without requiring it to be certified as compostable, you know, there are some affordable competitively priced. So I think those, the changes that are in here, I think are good, you know, are really solid and good changes. So I just wanted to add that. And then on the composting, you know, I look forward to following up with staff and council members, you know, on promoting, advancing composting within the city on a separate track, which it looks like it will be moving, so.
If I could grab the floor back for one more minute?
Sure, and thanks for your help.
Yeah. So I'll grab the floor back for one more minute. So I got a note from Cindy Di Vala, co-chair of the Environment Committee today, and she endorses this approach. And then I didn't say anything more about the business recycling requirement. Councilmember Mail made a very good observation a few months back, which is that we possibly have the greatest environmental gain to be had here in encouraging a much greater compliance rate, higher compliance rate with recycling, and in closing this gap with business recycling. I met with city staff and the city attorney last week, and we agreed that they would put their heads together and their preferred have the greatest environmental gain to be had here in encouraging a much greater compliance rate, higher compliance rate with recycling, and in closing this gap with business recycling. I met with city staff and the city attorney last week, and we agreed that they would put their heads together and the, their preferred approach, we agreed our preferred approach is to do a refresh of the Tacoma Park Recycling Code. Ms. Braithwaite would like to, in particular, also refresh the code that was put in place 20 years ago, I think possibly even before you were on the council, Mr. Mayor, for recycling by residents, just to modernize that and at the same time, to put in a business recycling requirement for Tacoma Park. And I'm hopeful that that can be done within the next couple of months.
And just to summarize my legal advice, the city has the authority to do everything that was initially proposed. So it's practical concerns, not legal concerns, that have caused us to scale back the proposal to just the polystyrene ban right now. But as far, we have the authority for environmental legislation, for health and safety legislation, and all these proposals fit squarely within that authority.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of comments. Councilmember Grimes brought up the issue of a hearing, and in general, I don't accept where the charter or the code requires it. I don't really understand why we have hearings, since we always have public comment of the same time limit and with the absence of any limit on the number of people that can speak anyway. So, you know, I'm supportive of not having a hearing if it's not required in some way, and I would not expect it would be. I support the language that we have now in this proposal and hope that we pass it. As Councilmember Grimes said, I do think there's a big opportunity and a missed opportunity for 20 years to look at, to do just conventional recycling, not composting, nothing fancy, you know, metal, glass, paper, from multifamily buildings and businesses. And that's something that I hope we can come up with, with code revisions that address, both that create the education, that create the requirement, and that are enforceable to make, to expand our programs to cover those things, those sectors of the waste market in Tacoma Park. With regard to composting overall and the lack of facilities in Maryland, I know there's been some legislative action on this issue and state action in terms of regs or policy. From my perspective, anything we can do, anything the city council of Tacoma Park can do in sending letters, in passing resolutions that would encourage more progress, faster progress at the state, with the current administration, with a future administration, with our delegation or any other part of the legislature, I think we should do that, because we have a program in the residential composting that is extremely popular with residents. And so we want to be able to continue to make gains and also not lose the ones we've created so far. That's it, I think. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilmember Stewart.
I just want to say thank you for all the hard work on behalf of everyone. And I agree with Councilmember Mail, if there is no need to have a public comment period, I think, you know, we should move forward with this. And I know this has been a lot of work on the part of the Young Activists. As I had mentioned before, my daughter, who now just started high school, was one of the very first groups who, you know, started working on this issue, and it would be great to have this move forward as quickly as possible. So thank you for everything.
Councilmember Smith.
And I'm sorry, just to be clear, I wasn't suggesting we not have public comment.
I mean, sorry.
Not here.
Sorry. It's late. Sorry. You're right.
That's all right. We'll quote you both.
Right.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say thank you also to the Young Activists. This is a very important issue. I would like to thank my colleague, Councilmember Grimes, for bringing this before the council. I know it took a lot of work, and I'm glad to see the revisions in the proposal before the council. One thing I would like to also say is that if we are going to consider some of these changes for multifamilies, I would hope that they are voluntary rather than mandatory composting or recycling for the larger multifamily properties. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey. Councilmember Grimes.
Ms. Braithwaite pointed out that it is impractical legally to require individual households within a multifamily apartment building to compost or recycle, because basically, you know, someone puts recyclables in the trash, you can't practically trace it back to a particular unit. And I think the same issue would occur with compostables, where we could require the buildings to offer the service, but we couldn't require, for practical reasons, individual tenants to use them.
And I'll just add my thanks to everybody for getting this to a place where we can pass this. I had some questions about the practicality of things when it originally came up a couple of months ago. I'm happy we're where we are, and we can proceed with this and the other ones as we get the additional ability to do things with some practical concerns taken care of. We'll get to the next pieces as well.
I'll recognize that the city manager raised the practicality point on several occasions.
He's ever-practical. So, any additional comments? We're ready to go forward with this, it sounds like. And so we have it, I think, on the agenda. Do we have this?
It's not on there, no.
All right. It will go on there.
Cool.
Thank you. Yes.
I know you were at the Folk Festival yesterday, and I was really impressed with the way they handled the trash this year.
Yes.
They did an excellent job. They had someone stationed there at the receptacles, make sure people were putting the right things in the right receptacle and...
And I was at one where somebody was ready to put the cup down in the cup recycling, and the person standing there took it and emptied the contents into another bag and then put the cup in.
Well, this is actually an additional point here. Unfortunately, the manager at Supergirl told me about a month ago that they were going to curtail some of their composting for the so-called post-consumer, the stuff that people have used, because there was too much mixture of the wrong materials in with the compostables. And then Megan from the Capital City Cheesecake told me the same thing last week, that I guess today, they were going to be changing their own approach to organic compostables, where I believe she said they would continue to compost kitchen wastes, but they would change the trash receptacles, the waste receptacles, because they found that they couldn't, they couldn't keep the stuff adequately separated. It's unfortunate, but that just points to the education that's needed here, and Tacoma Park is a small place.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I have to comment on that issue, because I think it's largely one of people not understanding where they're supposed to put things.
Which is why the Folk Festival approach.
And the cheesecake place is a great example, where you're faced with a set of receptacles that it's very unclear what is supposed to go in which place. You know, paper, everybody understands if something is made of a tree and pressed flat, they, you know, if you said that, you would know where to put it. But if it's food, are you also supposed to put the paper in with the food, or, you know? And what about paper that's soiled with food, and people just throw up their hands in the .5 second that they spend thinking about it and put it, whatever comes first? And I bet somewhere has figured out, probably California, how to design signage and, as well as receptacles, that get a higher rate of successful use.
Okay. So we will move forward with this ordinance. Final item for this evening is discussion of legislative priorities. I know that the city manager, the deputy city manager, wanted to be here but couldn't be here this evening, so we can discuss some things. I can give a short report on where things are with MML before the legislative conference, and the city manager might have a thing or two he wants to add, and I know some council members have some issues that they want to bring up. But we will have additional chances to talk about this. This evening is just a kind of a continuation of our discussion, and we'll probably want to have the, our lobbyist, who we will now be extending the contract with, so we can bring her in for additional discussions as well. That'll be helpful as we head into a new legislative session with many new legislators. As I said earlier, the MML Legislative Conference is this week. I don't remember if anybody else is coming besides me?
Yes.
You? Okay. Councilmember Simmons. That may be it from the city. The MML, one of the things that they didn't approve in the Legislative Committee, and it was a very close vote, it was 13 to 12, on our request for tax duplication legislation at the state level. And so I'm going to have part of the program at the Legislative Conference kind of explaining the next steps. It's essentially, we're on our own with municipalities and counties. The MML is changing what they're putting into the, kind of the palm card of all the important stuff that are MML priorities, and adding that and emphasizing tax duplication is important to municipalities. And I know that one of the practical results of things is that there will be legislation introduced that will be what MML would have put in if we had been able to get it through the Legislative Committee, which will be to change that language, to say that counties cannot tax municipal residents for services that they don't provide. So that that will, that will be something that we will want to be involved in in Annapolis. That legislation will go forward.
Mr. Mayor, are the votes on things like that public, or are they secret? Secret ballot?
They're public.
Public. Because I'm always struck by, for the MML officer elections, how little of substance I have to think about in those votes, and of course, you mostly manage the process for us. But that's clearly an issue where if there are members of the, who are running for higher office in the MML organization, who choose to deprioritize one of our most important issues, that's an important issue to vote on.
Right. Right. Yeah.
Doesn't do anything about the session, but...
Right. Yeah. It was a, it was a long, arduous discussion. There were very different viewpoints. There were a number of municipalities who said, "This legislation would harm us because we get grants now from our county, and this has the potential to take away what we get." And we know from the discussion that, because the, the part of it that was, that happened this past year was that there was a small group of MML and Mako representatives who were going to see if there was common ground on this. Everybody said, "Well, one of the things that legislators will ask at the state is, well, have you, have you talked to Mako? We want you to work this out, because we don't want to get in the middle of it, in between you two, because we'll be in the crossfire." And so we had those discussions, and Mako basically said, "We're not interested." So we're basically back at the county level of fighting this out with the county, with very little help at the state level, unless we can get some traction out of this legislation that I know will be introduced. Because one of the, my, one of my vice chairs is legislative, I'm a legislative committee, I feel sure will be elected to the legislature from District Three up in Frederick, and she has said that's the first bill she'll drop. So we will, we will have a chance to see what we can do with it, but I think our time is probably better spent working the county process. A reminder that September 18th, which is a week from Thursday, is the MML Montgomery Chapter Dinner in, or not dinner, meeting in Somerset, and with a particular emphasis on tax duplication issues with the county, discussion with the committee that Brian mentioned, the meeting that has, the meetings that have started taking place. And it was originally a meeting that wasn't on the schedule, but was added because people felt it was important that everybody get geared up for these discussions, because it's renewed chance to make something happen. And one of our, shifting gears a little bit, one of our requests that Councilmember Mail brought to our attention, and we made one of our legislative requests, was the State Innovation Grant Program. And I've got information here that the staff provided to the committee. There was a lot of recognition that, gee, this was really a good idea. It didn't get the support needed to kind of advance it to stage two for consideration, but there were a lot of people who really appreciated that and thought it was a good idea. And it's something that, if we wanted to, we could, we could push as a Tacoma Park bill, we could, you know, find sponsors, we could work it if we wanted to. And then we had other things that were here on the blue sheet that I know people might want to talk about, so I'll turn the floor over to anybody who wants to talk about any of these or any additional ones, knowing that we're probably not going to come up with our, with our agenda this evening, but at least we can talk about a couple of these if we want to. Councilmember Grimes.
I will address two or three of them. Purchasing streetlights at fair prices. Does Delegate Carr, assuming he's re-elected, intend to reintroduce something on this?
I'm sure, I'm sure he will.
Yeah. Well, I would, not seeing it, of course, yet. I would jump on board that and try to get the District 20 representatives who are elected to support that also. I think I'm the person who brought up MCAC data security in connection to license plate readers. Other council members might have been concerned about that as well. Frankly, I don't quite see where that's going to go. I'll remind people that there was a bill that imposed rules on MCAC regarding data retention and sharing and reporting and all of that kind of stuff. And according to the self-same Delegate Alcar and also Delegate Ana Sol Gutiérrez, the bill was so significantly watered down in getting it into passable form that they were unhappy about it. But it does not appear that they, so far as I have, anything I've heard, that they plan to introduce anything more. And I guess Senator Raskin said that he didn't think there would be a strengthening of that possible. These are all just remarks. I'm saying that there are other forces at play, and I would just sit back and watch what happens.
And of course, we can always, anything that we don't make our priority, we can always kind of put on the list of things as things progress, and we want to weigh in. That's where we use the lobbyist to let us know that something is moving, and we can provide testimony, and that can be very helpful.
The Bi-County Commission on the Cross Reds, I absolutely think that we should be involved in a collaborative effort with Prince George's and Montgomery Counties regarding the Cross Reds. I had a conversation that discussed some form of commission that maybe would extend for parts of the Purple Line, but I think would be better focused on the Cross Reds. I had a conversation about that with one of Leggett's aides, Chuck Short, and Ramberto Rodríguez, who's the county's representative for the Silver Spring Regional District. And if there's a mechanism to make this happen, either in direct consultation with the two counties or through some larger mechanism, you know, the state, since it would be cool to have them involved too, given the transit functions there, then I would strongly, strongly endorse that. I'll make one remark about the last thing I said, which is that apparently there has been a shortage of coordination between the bodies responsible for the Purple Line and the bodies responsible for the Transit Center that is being built right now in Tacoma-Langley Cross Reds. There has not been a lot of thought, from what I've been told, into literally bridging the Purple Line Station that would be in the center of the University Boulevard with the Transit Center that would remain on one side of the street. So I would strongly endorse a Bi-County Commission on the Cross Reds, not only for transportation, of course, but for economic development, for affordable housing, preservation of businesses that are there already, and all that kind of stuff. And last thing is to go back to the first on this, freestanding emergency rooms. I recognize that Mr. David Paris is in the room, it's a special interest of his. We had discussed this earlier and decided not to, I'm not sure we would have anyway, but to consider this for our request through the Maryland Municipal League. Instead, we talked about bringing this to Montgomery County, I'm sorry, to the members of the District 20 delegation, in particular Sheila Hickson and Jamie Raskin, for discussion as some sort of bill that would be specific to Montgomery County. I'd like to go ahead with that discussion with Senator Raskin and Delegate Hickson about the possibility of state legislation to offer, authorize freestanding emergency rooms in Montgomery County. Of course, we all realize, and I suppose we'll hear a lot more about it in a week... Of course, we all realize, and I suppose we'll hear a lot more about it in a week, that the situation with Washington Adventist Hospital and the relocation and the Certificate of Need application is complicated and changing and all of that kind of stuff. So I think what I'd suggest is that we hear from Rob Jepson and whoever else attends from Adventist Healthcare next week, and then we move forward with the discussion with those two District 20 representatives. Thank you.
And just on that last note, what you were saying about next week, my understanding is it will be Rob Jepson and then the new president of Washington Adventist Hospital is due to come onboard, I think, the following week.
Twenty-second.
And so...
Do you have an introductory, or do we have an introductory meeting?
We don't have anything set up yet, but we know it'll be not too long after he arrives. And so, there will be the opportunity for him to come to a council meeting as well. Other thoughts, other council members? Councilmember Mail?
Thank you. So I'll sort of go through this in order a bit. I would definitely support us trying to find champions in the legislature or frankly in a new administration who might pursue the creation of an innovation fund for municipalities. And I won't promise to understand the entire legislative system and the way Annapolis works, but that seems to me something that could be an easy win for a new administration looking for a way to affect and benefit not only its administration-level goals, but the 15% of people who live in municipalities. So maybe that's something we could start pursuing and it would give us a chance to work, not just with our own delegation, but maybe there's, you know, a couple of other places.
And another avenue that we could potentially pursue is getting support for it from the Sustainable Growth Commission that I'm a member of, because it's right up the alley of what was the infrastructure revitalization, revitalization and renovation, whatever, it's transformed into something else now. But with that recommendation going back, it basically is reinforcing the fact that things need to happen in municipalities.
Yeah, okay. On the freestanding emergency rooms, I have had a conversation with one of the candidates for D-20. I guess there's the question of whether something like this is better pursued with senior members who have more clout or new members who have more time. And I don't know the answer. Ideally, I guess we'd get both. So on the one hand, I'm interested in pursuing it, and the other, it's still not completely clear to me that the, I don't, I'll say it from my own perspective, I don't know the full range of services that freestanding emergency rooms provide where they exist in the United States. What I have been able to find out is that a freestanding emergency room, doesn't appear that anywhere a freestanding emergency room is as equal in function to a non-freestanding emergency room, but just where that difference lies, I don't know. And so, if we're going to pursue this, or I would propose parallel to pursuing this, we look both at trying to build champions, but we also try to make it clear what it is that we would get if we were to create this authority. I second Councilmember Grimes's comment about streetlight purchasing and frankly, in getting some advice from our state lobbyists on whether there's any strategy to make it more likely that a bill would pass or get more champions, make it out of committee. And I'll just touch on the By County Commission. I would have a hard time supporting it as it's written right there, but I hope that the rest of the council would support it with the amendment that I would propose, which is a By County Commission on New Hampshire Avenue or the New Avenue Corridor and the Crossroads, because I just can't see that those things aren't essentially the same issue.
I agree.
So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. The proposals that I would like to touch on are, one, for freestanding emergency rooms. That's something that I cannot support. I've spoken to the hospital administration on numerous occasions and they haven't expressed that they want legislation that would allow them the opportunity to maintain a freestanding emergency room. And they've even said that it might put their application to move the hospital in jeopardy. So I don't understand why the council would take the lead on changing legislation that might make it more difficult for the hospital to move forward with their certificate of I don't see how that's a win for the city of Tacoma Park. I support the ability for municipalities to purchase streetlights at fair prices. I don't think Pepco or whatever is going to be the subsequent name of the new company. I don't think they would let us do it, but I think it's an honorable effort that we should support. And I would like to see the increased funding from the state to provide business assistance for infrastructure improvements, especially with the Purple Line potentially coming in line. I've heard recently from County Councilmember Elrich that he doesn't know if the funding is from the federal government has been committed yet, and he doesn't know if it's going to be. So I would like to see that we pursue with members of the D-20 and other delegates to provide maybe a pool of money for municipalities in Prince George's County and Montgomery County for the Purple Line. Because I know I'm going to have some subsequent conversations with Prince George's delegates about supporting such a proposal.
Councilmember Stewart?
Great. So to start with the freestanding emergency rooms, I agree with Councilmember Mail that if we move forward and pursue this, we need to understand what we're getting and what we want. I think this could be a situation of be careful what you wish for if we are not actually defining what it is we want in our community. Some of the research I've done and looked at in some of the freestanding emergency rooms, the services they provide, I don't think are all the services that residents think they may be getting when they hear that. So I would want to really understand what we're asking for there. And then I think with, as Councilmember Mail and Councilmember Smith said, the streetlights at fair prices and the increased funding from the state to provide assistance to businesses for infrastructure improvements would be on the top of my list.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the very top of my list would be the creation of By County Commission, but certainly with Councilmember Mail's proposed amendment to the language here. You know, it would be utmost importance that we include New Hampshire Avenue Corridor. I agree with the streetlight proposal. I think, you know, this has been on the, up in front of the state several times and hasn't gotten very far. I know Pepco does a lot of lobbying against it. I think we should make an effort to see how we can really help to get that through this time. Strengthening of MCAC data security, I think, is important and also the increased funding from the state for the small businesses.
And I'll just add on the licensing for freestanding emergency rooms. I think that part of the discussion needs to be with Senator Raskin and Delegate Hickson about the, and with our lobbyist, about the practical considerations of whether that could go anywhere. I've always thought that there were practical reasons why it wasn't going forward in the time period we've been dealing with, but things can change and with the new administration and new legislature, I think we need to kind of reassess the possibilities for that and understand what that might entail. And so I think further discussions on that are a good idea.
What would you see as the sequence there? Some of my colleagues have talked about trying to figure out what it is we're actually aiming for.
I think figuring that out, but also getting a sense from the legislators and from our lobbyists that can go on a parallel track of their assessment of where things might stand and what the possibilities are. I think we could do both at once.
I just don't see how you can make this argument for a local bill when it would impact...
I don't think it would be a local bill. I think it would be a statewide bill. Or even understanding the chances of either way.
I wonder if staff could just, there are, what, one or two existing freestanding emergency rooms in the state?
Yes.
And if staff could just prepare like a one paragraph summary of what services, you know, just something that gives us a little bit more of, you know, your summary of what those facilities provide?
May I ask our consultant?
Okay. Because we have, you know, we have an urgent or, you know, there is an urgent care facility planned for that site, of course, we know what a current emergency room does, and just trying to understand what those others do in between that.
Well, I'd propose to ask, to add to that request to the consultant in evaluation whether this could be a county bill, a local bill, or whether it would be a state bill. I would think that's not going to be too hard to answer, requiring too much time.
And I would like to find out if these freestanding emergency rooms are profitable.
So, okay, so we've got two different...
No healthcare institution these days is profitable, period.
Yeah, but I mean, if, Washington Adventist Hospital is having problems now, meeting their obligations. So if we put together legislation that forces them to maintain a freestanding emergency room in Tacoma Park, it might hurt their balance sheet even more.
But any legislation would enable them to, it wouldn't force them to.
Some of us were present, the mayor and myself, I can't remember whether another council member was there with the last meeting with Rob Jepson a couple of months ago, and I think the complexion of the leave behind in Tacoma Park, the designation of it is changing, which is the reason I suggested waiting until next week's presentation before moving forward on the freestanding emergency rooms. I, a little bit of bleak here, a lot of bleak here, but I think we could wait a week before moving ahead. Well, at least the first two parts of the inquiry, I maybe don't have to wait, but a week isn't a long time.
I don't think there's going to be a lot of progress in the next week.
A week's not a long time.
Yeah, and given the fact that the city manager and the deputy city manager are going to ICMA, I don't think a lot is going to happen in a short period of time.
Yeah, so maybe hold the inquiries off at least a week.
Or two.
On another issue, on the municipal street lighting piece, Delegate Carr has always, his legislation, at least in my experience, has been statewide, right? It's been, you know, this is how it's going to work. And I wonder if in this case, we might want to try to pursue something that is Tacoma Park-specific, just like we pursued something to let, to allow restaurants to have a different ability to sell, bottom line, you know, out of a restaurant. If we want to try to get language that would say, you know, Pepco or the utility must negotiate with the municipality of Tacoma Park and complete those negotiations by X date. That may be too specific to get into here, but if we, anyway, I mean, I think we've shown good faith, right? One of the things we went through last year was trying to negotiate with Pepco. We can go back to people in the Capitol and say, well, we tried that and, you know, we had our time getting anybody to sit at the table with us. So we want you to force them to sit at the table with us.
Just, I mean, again, a quick refresh on this conversation, the strangest conversation I've had thus far as city manager, and that is saying something. Even just, it's the strangest conversation. Even just getting the number of streetlights that are in Tacoma Park, one, and a price, I'll take that as progress because they, it has been difficult to get just those two pieces of information. How many streetlights are in Tacoma Park that they own and what price would you, I'll take that, because then we can start to negotiate, then we can shoot for something.
I will ask that of the Maryland Region Vice President next Monday morning when I'm at the Community Advisory Committee meeting at Pepco.
And you get it answered?
Not on Monday, but I will. Point out that we don't have that answer. That's what that meeting is for, those kinds of issues. Any other comments on this preliminary work session discussion on legislative priorities? Okay, thank you. Your turn.